Howdy, everybody. Today is Friday, July 9th. It is 6:01 PM. This is the Capella City Council meeting in a special call session at the Capella Arts Center. We are... It is... Is my mic on? Do... We may not have speakers in here, so... First item is, oh, I've got a couple of announcements to make. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Is Mr. Hill online? Our Mayor Protim, actually. All right. Could you let us know when he actually joins us? So, just as a reminder, we've been asked to have our assessments printed out in color for tomorrow morning, not tonight. Thanks, everybody, for taking care of that. We're here this weekend to talk about, basically, the way to make our city council effective. And there are five items that were passed out much earlier, I think about a month ago, when this meeting was scheduled. And I'm just going to go over the high-level points of those. We're going to talk about building mindset and mindset skills that's just putting us in the right mind of how to approach city governance. We're going to cultivate a sense of self-awareness so that we know where we stand, as well as where those around us stand. We're going to learn how to integrate the whole council member in a situational standpoint. This is taking us, perhaps, out of our comfort zone and letting us learn how to act as a council member. We're going to talk about psychological safety and how that impacts our ability to make decisions. And a little bit more on that, how to make good decisions for the city. Welcome, Mayor Protim. Glad to... Hate to think where you are with that background right now.
That's just not right.
I don't know where you are, but I'm jealous.
He's in Colorado.
I'm jealous.
Yeah, I just got off the river about half an hour ago, and that's where I was.
Thank you for sharing. And then, the last item that we're going to talk about is the next right thing. And that's probably the hardest thing that I have. When you make a hard decision, how do you go to make the next best decision after that? We're not going to cover all that tonight. We're going to spread this over the two days. This is set up to be a very informal and casual discussion. Questions and comments are welcome. We're going to be talking about a lot of things this weekend. It's going to be a very packed agenda. I don't think that we're going to come away bored. Mike kept trying to put more things on the agenda, and I kept telling him, I think we're going to be fatigued, mentally fatigued, at the end of this anyway, so I hope we're coming away knowledgeable and informed and not exhausted. Tonight, helping us out is Dr. Mike Maury. Everyone's talked to Mike on the phone, and it's nice for him to have made the face-to-face recognition today. Mike is with Strategic Government Resources, SGR. He's been with them about 10 years. They're responsible for working with city councils, government entities, and organizations that need assistance, training, or help. And he's been with them for 10 years doing that. And I'd like to introduce Mike.
I lived 15 years in Colorado. And he wanted to talk about fly fishing, and I said, "I can't, because I have to charge you double for that." Just out of Adam Lawson. Anyway, welcome. Really an honor to be here tonight with you. And I've worked with my land and the staff for many years, done lots of different leadership training things. And I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but you have one of the finest city managers anywhere to be found, and one of the finest staffs. And I've worked with a lot of staff. In fact, I came back home today from being in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, this morning, working with emergent leaders there. And that's a great city, and they've got a great staff. But it's not. Some just say it, you know? You've got a lot to be proud of, and man, this feels so fantastic. And I was teasing Mike when I... He came, and I was like, "Why would you everybody at SGR hear it here?" You know? And he said, "Well, just open." So, anyway, it's great. Great to be here. Every year, the best baseball players in the world take the month of March, and they spend 30 days in either Arizona or where?
Florida.
Florida. I bet Mark would choose Florida, but anyway, we won't hold that against him. And they spend those 30 days, the best baseball players in the world, working on the basics of the game. They work on the things that we teach 10-year-olds when we're teaching them how to play baseball or softball, how to field a ground ball, how to catch a pop fly, how to tag up, how to steal a base, et cetera, et cetera. Remember, these are the best baseball players in the world. And the reason they do that is because the fundamentals of the game have to be so much sort of second nature to them that during the course of the season, they don't have to think about it, because they reviewed it, and it just comes naturally. Because the rigors of that season, 100 and, I think, 62 games, is so much that they don't have time to work on those basics then. It's just got to be there. And for me, in many ways, that's a metaphor for why we bother to take time talking about governance for city councils. Now, some of you are new in a council, some of you have been here a long time, but these are the basics. And the reason we talk about the basics is because the demands and the drive of city council life is so intense that how you do it has to be second nature to you. If you're spending... We'll talk more about this. If you're spending a lot of time at every meeting thinking about, "Is this how we do it? Wait, that wasn't right. Wait, I don't think this process is good." You're losing precious time. And, you know, as devoted as all of you are, I know to the city of Capella, you still only have so much time. You only have so much emotional energy to put into it. And if you can get together in an agreement as a council on how things are done, it frees up more time focused on what to do. So, that's why we're talking about this now. And we do this kind of presentation in lots of places. In fact, we counted up, you were talking about being with SGR 10 years. We counted up a year or so ago and realized, I haven't done the same workshop 500 times, but I've done over 500 local government workshops in the last 10 years. So, really, I'm becoming a workaholic. That's the problem, you know? So, all right, let's talk about effective board governance. And, you know, I don't know that there's a better place to start. And if you can't see this, don't worry too much, because we'll send Mike this PowerPoint so you can have it. But I don't know if there's a better place to start than you think about civic responsibility than the ancient Athenian code, which was a code that every Athenian 18-year-old boy had to swear allegiance to in ancient Greece. And we've translated it into English, and it's not quite as beautiful, I think, this way, but the point comes across. "We will never bring disgrace on this our city by an act of dishonesty or cowardice." That's number one. Number two, "We will fight for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with the many, with the whole. We will revere and obey the city's laws, and will do our best to incite a light reverence and respect in others." In other words, we're going to inspire others to have a sense of civic duty by the way we live and the example we set. Number four, "We will strive unceasingly to quicken the public sense of civic duty." That's a challenge, isn't it, in our day and time? More than maybe any other time. We hear this so often. And then finally, and this is my favorite one, "We will leave this city greater and more beautiful than it was when given to us." That's a high aspiration, isn't it? And I would hope that in everything you do, outside of talking about the nuts and bolts of good governance, this would really capture for you. One time, I was doing a retreat for a city in East Texas, and the mayor of the city at that time was a former Texas high school football coach. Now, I played Texas high school football, and I love football, so don't take this the wrong way, but every stereotype you can think of for a Texas high school football coach, he was it to the team. And so, there was a little animosity between the council and the staff in that city. And so, in his mind, at the beginning anyway, there was some animosity between SGR and the council. But that was totally in his mind. It really wasn't in our mind at all. So, I have this question. It was really a rhetorical question that we asked, which was, whoops, "When does a team become a team? When does a T E A M become an all-caps T E A M?" And I really was just asking it rhetorically, you know? But when I did, he jumped on it. And he almost came out of his seat and said, "I can tell you exactly when a team becomes a team." I'm like, "Okay, Coach. I wasn't looking for a fight." "Okay." And then he says, "A team becomes a team when everybody's pulling in the same direction, and nobody cares who gets credit for success." I... It's not a good answer. That's a great answer, right? I mean, how do you improve on that, right? A team becomes a team when everybody's pulling in the same direction, nobody cares who gets credit for success. And I think that's true in local government, right? Because, I mean, you know, the success of the council is the staff's success. The success of the mayor is the council's success. The success of the staff is the council's success. Everybody succeeds when we succeed. And does it really matter who gets credit for it if you succeed? It really shouldn't. It really shouldn't, because you'll all get... There'll be plenty to bask in. And on the other hand, when we're not pulling in the same direction, we really don't succeed near as much as we could, right? And then everybody gets the blame. So, a question becomes, and we'll talk about this as we go along tonight, how do you get everybody pulling in the same direction? How do you get the council pulling in the same direction as the mayor? How do you get the staff pulling in the same direction to council? How do you get seven duly-elected council members pulled together? And I've been in some places where it has been said, and they are right, we're not a team. We don't have to function as a team. I was elected, she was elected, he was elected, but we're just individuals. We don't have to function as a team. And they're right about that legally, but they're wrong about that practically. Does that make sense? So, the truth is, you know, if you get a baseball team together, they've got to play as a team. You get a soccer team, they've got to. That's their job. A council, a board, you don't have to legally, but practically, to get anything done, you do. And so, we're going to talk about what that looks like. Now, here's a question for you. What do we mean by governance? And what do we mean by leadership? How are those two words the same? And how are those two words different? So, let's let you talk about it. I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer here, but let's hear back from you a little bit. What does governance mean to you? And how is that the same and different from the word leadership? So, anybody, jump in, and let's talk about it. I see all these seated people, like, okay, it's you. It's your turn. All right, Cliff's going to jump in first.
Governance. Governance is more P, which is more of a...
Okay.
I think about that. I hope that...
Okay.
Leadership is, uh... I...
That was leadership or servanthood or something like that. I'm not sure.
Well, some leaders have to have lieutenants that keep an eye on what they're doing to make sure that they do it properly, so...
Yeah.
Don's agreed to be a lieutenant.
I like what you said, though, Cliff, because, you know, it's important to remember, governance is this whole body, not seven, eight individuals. You know, you as a council member can't govern. You as a council can govern. And, you know, you can't direct staff just because you had a good idea. And we see this a lot in places. That's... You might have leadership and influence, but you can't direct staff. As a governing body, certainly, you direct the guidance, the direction of the city through the city manager. That's a difference, right? Okay?
That is a difference. And the leadership is, like I say, that's more personal, because you're going to have various degrees of leadership. People are not going to lead the same way. And some can be, you know, some end up being pretty good managers, but not necessarily leaders or the leadership skills, because there's a difference in the two. And so, that's kind of the ultimate thing that we strive for is being a leader in a leadership, because that entails getting folks to work together. And it's sort of, you know, you're directing, but you have to be sensitive to those folks that are working for you, because it's not for you, it's for the folks that work for you.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah, especially when we think about a servant leader leads in a way for what is best for those being served, right? All right, let's hear it from somebody else. That's a good discussion. Somebody build on that. All right. All right, Kevin, go for it.
I'll go second. All right, so, when I think about governance, I think about kind of like a higher level, like it's this guidance that is being given. And it's more... It's less intimate, if that makes sense, in comparing it to leadership. To me, leadership means that you're actually down in there inspiring others to do the work, possibly even doing some of the work yourself, to build trust, so that when you have that trusting relationship, you know, you're inspiring others, but also other people that trust in you, that you are going to lead, and they will follow you. And to me, that works really well. But governance, to me, is the... It's like a higher level of that, where just like, hey, here's kind of the direction, the leadership, we're going to go together. But leadership actually is that lower level where you're just making those connections.
Okay. I hadn't thought of it that way. I like that, though. That makes a lot of sense. Two different animals, really. All right? Who else? Somebody else joining here? All right, Don.
All right, so, I guess I see leadership often as like this vision, or getting everybody pulling in the same direction, getting everybody sort of on the same page. Whereas governance, I sometimes just view it as, here's the rules of the road that we have come up with. Maybe the leadership has come up with these rules of the road because it reflects our vision, but now the governance is sort of the boundaries that we live within, so...
Yeah. I don't want to say, and I don't think you're saying either, that governance is so rigid that there's no sway.
Right.
But there's certainly less sway than there is with the dynamic leadership, because that may change depending upon a lot of things. But governance, we're kind of counting on to not change too much, although we need common sense sometimes on how we go with it, right?
Yeah. I think that's fair.
Okay. Very good. All right. Are we just going to go around the circle here? Who wants? Let's go... Let's flip the side here. John, you jumped in here on this.
I can do yours.
This is like influence, like a your turn, right?
No, or yes?
I guess for me, governance is more of a, I guess, set of rules and regulations that you try to follow, whereas leadership is more so of maybe trying to find the ultimate best way to get to the goal.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Very good. I like that. Anybody else want to add something to it? Breanna, you want to jump in there?
Thank you. I mean, I think very similar to what a lot of people have said, right? Like, I think of governance at that higher level, where there's... Not higher level, but governance as in having that governing body that oversees. It's a more than one person. And it includes... It could include a group of people who are coming up with some sort of parameters, whatever those parameters look like, right? Rules, regulations, ordinances, whatever it may be, that others will follow, that others will abide by, I guess. But providing some guidance, I should say. Where I see leadership as that not everybody that is in the position of governance necessarily might have the style, may have the... They could have a different leadership style, or they don't necessarily have to be a leader, right? Like, you don't necessarily have to be a leader to be an elected official, for example. Because... Have to think about that. You would want them to be a leader, but, I mean, people just have different styles, right?
There's a lot of parameters. A lot of parameters for me.
Right. And I think of, from the leadership standpoint, it's a matter of then, are you in that position? Is it to implement what you've governed in a way? So...
Yeah. So, maybe one way, what I'm hearing you kind of collectively say, is that governance provides structure and regulations, order. Leadership within that context can be very dynamic and different, different styles, different needs, you know? And, you know, to think about roving leadership, in certain problems, the person that has the title, let's say, mayor, is not really the one we need to lead at that moment, because that's not in his wheelhouse. It's somebody else. But that doesn't mean the structure of the mayor as the leader of the council has changed, right? I know that's true of my team. I lead my team, but there are times when I'm not the best person for the spotlight to be on. That doesn't mean my position has changed, it's just what's called for it at the moment has changed. But governance has to provide some structure. And I think that's an important thing to talk about, because you have to agree on it, and I think you said this, Breanna, you have to agree on what those parameters, those boundaries are, and then you have to abide by them, for sure. So, we're going to talk about that a little bit. Mark, anything you want to add to that? Gotcha. So, I want to talk about this for just a minute as we kind of get into this. And Mike and the staff have seen this lots of times, because this is our fourth dimension leadership pyramid. Years ago, even before I joined SGR, it was created as a way to, really, to house and identify the classes we teach. But as we've worked with it through the years, we've come to realize it's a lot more than just how our classes are organized. If you look at it, really, this really is how a person effectively reads. And I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I hope this will be helpful. We would suggest that all legitimate leadership begins with healthy relationships. That's the foundation for all legitimate leadership. And at that level, no matter what your title or what your position in the organization, people will follow you basically because of how you treat them. That all things being equal, we're more likely to cooperate with someone who treats us with dignity and respect and honor, more so than somebody that just grunts at us when we walk by, and that's on a good day, you know? The rest of the time, they don't even care about us. We might do what they want, but we're not really going to go the extra mile for them, because we just... That's human nature. And at that level, you know, leadership is influence. And that's true both external leadership and internal, how you treat people in the community and how you treat staff and each other. And I, you know, I enjoyed all my conversations with y'all, and I usually do with most council members. I remember in one city, I was doing the interviews with a person, and he was really... We were doing strategic vision for their city, and it was going to be a big two-day event, so y'all think six to nine is bad. Can you imagine two days with me? I mean, you know, that's what they were ready for. And when I did the interview with him, I really loved this guy, because he was really into strategic planning. And, you know, that was my doctoral project and everything, and so I liked reading about it. He'd bring you the book. I'd say, "I've read that one." Then he'd mention another one. I'm like, "Ah, I hadn't read that one." I had a list of four of my books, just some talking to me that I wanted to dive into. I was really fired up getting to meet this guy. We meet in person, and in this case, all of the department heads and some of the ADs were also a part of this retreat. And we hadn't been going for 30 minutes, and I was like, "Oh, we have a problem." Because that councilman, even though he knew a lot about strategic planning, he knew nothing about how to treat people. And he was, in 30 minutes, belittling staff, embarrassing them, calling them out over nothing. And, you know, guess what? He wasn't getting very much done, you know? And no surprise there, right? Because healthy, legitimate leadership rests on the foundation of healthy relationships. If you violate that, you'll get people's compliance, but you'll never get their passion. Never. The next level, though, is operational leadership. And at that level, people will follow you because you know more about it than they do. You know as staff, you know how to operate the machinery, or you know how to run this program or whatever. On council, you've been through budget season before, right? And so, they're like, "Okay, let me see how this works," you know? And that's how it does. You know more about it. But what you've got to remember is, just like I was saying, just because you move into that level as a leader where you've got some experience and people are looking to you because of that, doesn't mean you can abandon relational leadership. We all know cases in organizations, probably had it in the banking industry, where people were supervisors, and they knew everything technically about the job, but they were sucking the life out of their team because of how they treated them. And it could happen on council, right? It could happen. And so, you want to avoid that, because... And you've got to check yourself with that. And then I want to say this as we move on, remember that on the council, your job is not to be an operations and staff. That's their job, not Charles' job. Even though you may be a great operator and understander of things and manager, that's not your job on the council. That's Mike's job. The third level, which starts to get into the levels that you really need to be spending the bulk of your energy on, is what we call systems leadership. And at that level, people will follow you because they trust you have put into place systems that work, even if you're not there to make it work. And that's really important, and that's a higher level of leadership, right? Because you're not just doing it, now you're stepping back and saying, "How can this work so that it's fair for everyone?" And that's a hard thing in a community the size of the city of Capella. Good grief, it's hard in a city, for a city the size of Cameron, Texas, 5,000 people, not 55,000 people like you've got or more. But that takes a lot of energy, and that's one reason I'm saying, you want to get the resolve how you do things so that you have energy left over to create the right kind of systems. And by the way, as your city grows and matures and changes, sometimes what has to happen? Your systems have to change, don't they? And what worked for you when you were at this level in the city... And what worked for you when you were at this level in the city, maybe doesn't work. But it's still your job to help create the system. That's why we say about council, you are a policy creating board. You are not an executing board. Because you start firing people, and I guess that makes you an executor, which we don't want. The fourth level, and the highest level, is what we call strategic leadership. And at that level, people will follow you because they trust that you understand accurately where the organization needs to go. That's a whole different level. And, and I hear this all the time, in fact, I think some of you even said this to me when we were interviewed. When we talk about your motivation, I hear this, I hear it not just from lots of places. "I want my city to be a place where my children and grandchildren will want to live after they've come back from going to school at Baylor University," which I'm sure is where they're going to go, right, John? Oh, wait, no. Mayor is a, I, y'all didn't know I was a Baylor guy, huh? Of course. And, and so, two big differences in strategic leadership in every other level of leadership. One is what we mentioned a moment ago, the vision. It's about the future. All the other levels are about now. Strategic leadership is not about now, it's about tomorrow, and where are we going? And it takes a lot of good thinking for that. And again, if you're burning all your energy on the little things, you're not going to have the emotional energy to deal with the big things. Now here's the other one, and I don't want to take too much time on it, but this. While you grow leaders from the ground up, you instill culture from the top down. The only way somebody can join Capel's staff and start poisoning it with a negative attitude is if there's a void of leadership to begin with. Because when you have strong leadership in place, when somebody negative comes in, what does leadership do? They put a boundary on that, and they say, "Hey, Mal, we love you, but you can't do that on this team. You can't act like that, we're not going to, we're not going to do that." And if you, you know, you either do it right, the Capel way, or you go work for, I don't know, Southland, not Great Hall, yeah, or wherever. It's like Jimmy John's. Jimmy John's does not promise that they make the best sandwich in the world. Jimmy John's brand promise is what? Freaky fast, that's exactly right. And if, if you can't be freaky fast, you can't work at John's, Jimmy John's. So, but when there's a void of leadership, that is allowed to go, that's allowed to spread, and it's bad. You, as the council, are responsible ultimately for the culture of the organization. I don't know how to say that forcefully enough. I haven't been in five hundred cities, but I've been in a bunch of them. You do the list of cities that I've done council retreats or managed teams with, it's over a hundred cities in the last ten years, all over the nation. And one thing's the same. When you find a culture with the council that is um, cognizant of their role and responsibility in alignment with these things, you find a staff that's empowered and trying to do and often is doing unbelievable things. When you find a culture in the council and towards upper management that is belittling, that is distrustful, that is questioning, that is usurping, you find a staff that is um, usually on the SGR job board, trying to find a job somewhere else. Because they can't, they can't function that way. They can't function, because they can't count on that right culture. Now that doesn't mean you don't hold people accountable. You hold people accountable through the city management. You hold him accountable, the staff's his responsibility, and if they're not getting it done, you talk to them about it and say, "Hey, we've got a problem here." But you can't take it on as your job to say, "We're going to manage all these different people." Years, a few years ago, I was doing a council retreat in Charlotte, North Carolina. It was not for the city, but for a suburb like that. And um, so there was, there was a um, one, one lady on the council, there was several ladies, but there was one lady on the council, that I don't know why, but she just had it out for the Parks and Rec Director. And I mean, every time we get going, she would just start saying, "Well, the problem is the Parks and Rec Director," blah, blah, blah. And I'm, "Hold on a minute." That's, that's, and the city manager's name is Kevin. That's Kevin's job. That's Kevin, you don't manage it. "Oh, okay, where are we going?" And so then, after the day, it was like, you know, every time she got a, got a tip, she'd say, "Well, the problem is the Parks and Rec Director." And I'm, "Well, wait a minute, remember, that's Kevin's problem. He manages her." And, and so anyway, we kind of went on, we got the strategic plan done. Go to the end of the day, and, and we'd have takeaways. So again, what was your takeaway? So here's my takeaway, here's mine. We get to her, say, "What's your takeaway?" And she says, "My takeaway is, Kevin, city manager, Kevin has a lot of problems." That's just kind of it, you know? So, so, so we're talking, I'm not doing good in my drawing, I'm sorry. The problem child. Um, we're talking about the importance of realizing my role in strategic leadership. Setting the culture, kind of culture you want, and then making great plans for the future. Kind of like what you said, Mayor, what's the next big thing? That's, that's what great cities are thinking about. They're not thinking about the past, they're not sitting on their laurels, they don't want the next big thing. So I want to just show this real quick, and, and we'll tie it in. We call this the, the cycle of strategic vision. I think I saw the strategic vision loop there. You can really pick this up anywhere you want to, but the first part, really, is getting input from citizens. About where do you want to go, what's really important to them, as you're thinking about the vision. By the way, you know, right? There's a difference between a strategic vision and a strategic plan. I know we use those terms interchangeably, but they're not the same. A strategic vision is about direction, it's about where you want to go. And that's the responsibility of this board right here. Nobody else can legitimately determine the vision for the city of Capel except the people in this room as a board. But a strategic plan is about how you get there. And that is primarily the responsibility of the staff, not the council. You decide the direction and say, "That's the direction we want to go." Staff works and says, "Okay, council, if that's where you want to go, here's how you can get there." Now, they're not mutually, uh, you know, exclusive, but one certainly takes priority over the other. Another part of this strategic vision is getting input from the staff. What did they see on the horizon? What does their professional experience tell them? What are they seeing other cities doing? Now, you have the right to take some, none, or all of what they say. That's your right. But you'll have a better, more robust strategic vision if you listen to them and you get input from them. You get all that together, and then you create that vision. And usually, y'all, I don't know how exactly y'all do that, lots of times that's in a retreat setting. However it is, you determine, here's our priorities. Then staff says, "Okay, let's create the plan." And, and, and between the, the plan and the time that council approves of that plan, in most cases, there's a lot of give and take, there's a lot of going back and forth. Sometimes staff gets frustrated with that. But I would say that's not bad governance, that's good governance. Because what you're trying to do is determine what's the price point that we as a council are willing to support for that vision. So we often talk about cars, um, you know, because it just makes, it's easy. So you, as a council, may say, "Well, what we want is, we want to drive a BMW. That's what we want Capel to have. It, it should be a BMW city." And so staff goes, "Okay, we'll get at it." And they go and they find the best-priced BMWs, and they come back to you and they say, "This is the price point for that." And you say, "Oh, wow, that's nice, it's really good, but there is no way, no way we're going to put that on our citizens. No way that we're going to raise these for that, no way. We're maybe thinking a Lexus." So staff goes back and says, "Okay, let's, let's find a price of Lexus." You come back and they say, "Here's the price of a Lexus, and it's got everything the BMW had, and all of this, and, and here's the price," and you say, "Yeah, it's better, but, uh, I don't know. I think maybe we're thinking a Honda Accord, that's maybe what we're thinking, you know? Or if you're really cheap, you're like me and you drive a Hyundai, okay? So, uh, Capel wouldn't drive a Hyundai, I know, I get it. And that's okay, to give that going back and forth. It's okay, because you're finding the price point. There is John Carver, who's really a great expert on board governance, says the question you as a council always have to ask is, "What good for what group at what cost?" That's the big questions. What good are we going to do? What is the group that's going to benefit from it? And what is the cost that we're going to do? And I know y'all got some tough decisions on that coming up in the next few years on your budget, that's what it's about. Well, anyway, once you get to agreement, which largely has to do with the budget, then it's a matter of saying, "Let staff execute, get out of their way and let them do it." But, just like in great sports, you got to check in, you got to halftime adjustments, it's important to bring you back together and say, "How are we doing? What's worked, what hasn't, what's changed?" And so you evaluate it. And then staff makes adjustments, and you're off and running. And, and then you make that circle again. So I just wanted to give you that context, because when we think about governance, remember it's in the context of leadership. Governance keeps things in bounds, leadership makes things happen. You're not on this council just to keep things the way they've always been. You, you want to change things, that makes sense. You want progress, that makes sense. You can't live in the metroplex and not want progress. You'll get swallowed up, you'll get swallowed up. That's what I love about it, my favorite city in the world. Because you got to think big to thrive in DFW, don't you? It's not like, it's not like other places where you can be that way, I won't mention it. All right, let's go on. Here's a quick video, you may have seen this before. This comes from the Covey organization. It's about five minutes long, and um, I think it makes a lot of sense. We talk about governance and kind of transitions, so check this out.
Your name is?
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth? Ever work life?
I do.
Family life as well?
Mm-hmm.
Children?
Not yet.
Not yet? What's the nature of your work assignment?
I direct an international firm.
An international firm?
Mm-hmm.
So you really are interfacing with all kinds of people, in the firm and outside the firm?
That's right.
You want a rich personal life and a rich family life? Do you ever feel like you get bogged down in the thick of thin things?
Yes.
Well, that might be analogous to all these little, small things that tend to fill our life. And they're just little by little, they just accumulate. Now, your job, you can't go above this, is to get all those large rocks in the jar. Good luck. What's that one called?
Q2, Planning, Preparation.
Right. Planning, Preparation, Prevention, and Empowerment. Okay, the next rock she's putting in there is called Relationships and Family. You didn't look at that third rock you put in there, that's employment, some key employment issue, and then you put major projects here, I can't get it above there.
They haven't worked it yet.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's fair. That's called Service, Community, Church. Do you ever feel like this?
Yes.
How many feel like this? By moving the little things around, you might squeeze in one more of those big, major things. It's almost, wow! You know, but it doesn't fit, force it. Here's something that's called Urgent and Important. It's a quadrant one thing that is blindsiding you, that uh, your biggest client, that if you don't get back to that client now, you've given up your vacation, and you have no special block of time just for yourself. I'll tell you what you can do if you want to. You can take a whole different approach. You have a totally fresh bowl. You can work out of a different paradigm altogether.
Well, then I'd rather put these in the bottom, and then pour the little pebble down.
Employment.
Big opportunity.
Big opportunity.
Important and urgent, block of time. Those young children keep looking at me. Glad my husband's not here. No, I don't leave them there.
Okay?
Personal life, but you're smart, let's apply it to council life. What's the application that you can make from that? Anybody? How does that apply to Capel City Council? Breanna?
I think, I mean, even though that resonated with me. The, I'm just thinking about like, big decisions, small decisions, like where, where are we spending our time and our energy, right? Are we looking at the future? Are we focusing on things that were done that we can't undo, or that we should have done differently? And then, kind of, how are we prioritizing what we need to do as a council to, as, yeah, to govern and, and lead?
Yeah. Do you ever feel like there's a million little pieces, things coming at you that take all your time? Yeah. All right, somebody else add to that? What resonates with you, Mayor?
So the, the thing that I took out of that, or that I found interesting was, he labeled the big blocks because those were important.
Yeah.
And those little green blocks, which were probably aquarium gravel or something like that, there was a whole bunch of them, but they weren't labeled.
Yeah.
So that probably means they weren't nearly as important. And, you know, from our standpoint, those big blocks are the things that we deal with, you know, with the, our ever meeting where we have our, you know, things that we're approving, the planning and zoning, and, and budget, and infrastructure improvement. You know, the big items that that governance has set us up to do.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's where, just like she was struggling with it, that's where our, that's where our lives are, that's where our governor, governance is.
Yeah, and if you don't put those big rocks in first, you don't have room for them. They, they won't, they won't all fit. Matt, Kevin?
You know, um, I'll say, I think, um, a challenge that I have as a new council member is properly identifying what is a big rock and what is a, you know, a, a little rock. Because, um, because I, I don't want the interpretation to be like, you know, the little rocks are like citizen complaints or something like that, and we don't take those seriously. But like, how do you, how do you balance, you know, all of those things? I, I think that that's, uh, as a newer council member, that's one thing that I want to make sure that I strike a good balance of doing the big projects, like our, you know, our, our mayor just said, but also make sure that, that I understand what is a big rock and what is a little rock.
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and I, I think part of the answer, I don't know that this is a full answer, but I think part of the answer is making sure that you, as a board, have identified what are our strategic priorities as a board. Which is not, and it needs to be unified. You know, because you may have seven, and Biju has three, and so forth, it's got to be... It's gotta come together. Comment on that.
Sure, thank you. Um, I think the illustration of the video to me, the bucket is a city.
Yeah.
And the small rocks, big rocks are people, maybe groups of people. But all those fit into one bucket and everybody's voice is heard.
Yeah.
And in this particular bucket, everybody's inclusive.
Yeah.
And it fits in there.
Yeah.
So you need to have a different paradigm. The lady was trying to fit everything in one bucket. She started thinking differently. If there is an empty bucket there, let me try there. And everything did fit in there. So we should be listening. We should be the voice for the voiceless. We should be the people who are trying to see different approach to problem solving. And it may not be the right time or right fit when we do traditional things. Maybe we have to think outside of the box.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good comment, Biju, because you go back to the, the strategic vision. It really starts with input from citizens. And that breaks down a little bit in my little chart because I don't mean to say, you just listen to them at one point and then you forget them. I mean, you're listening to them all the time, but there also needs to be a time, a specific time, when you're focusing on what are people saying? Because that has to fit into what are our priorities? And you know, you, you've gotta do what's fair for everybody. But that's the tough decision that the seven of you have to decide on. And is what good for what group at what cost? You have a comment on that, Don?
Uh, I do. What, the whole analogy, I guess, makes me think they're not mutually, mutually exclusive. And he used the word paradigm at one point. And there is a paradigm where they are mutually exclusive. Because if you focus all on the little rocks only, you don't have time for the big rocks. But if you reverse that paradigm, then you can do it. So there, but so even though sometimes we think they're mutually exclusive, I've, I've gotta take care of all this little stuff. Or it's not gonna get taken care of. The fact is, if you take care of some of the big stuff, it will enable you to take care of the little stuff. It's, it's, it's like the, the, you know, they always say, uh, you, you gotta get your rest. You gotta get your rest. And sometimes we buy into this idea, but I don't have time to get rest. I gotta get all this stuff done. When in reality, if you don't get the rest, you can't get the stuff done. So it's, it's that shifting, you know, turning that paradigm upside down.
Yeah.
What you think is the obvious answer to this. Um, and so all that little stuff comes in and berates you into addressing it right now. When in reality, if you really will take care of this other stuff, you'll still have time for the little stuff because you've delegated it or you, you've set up a, a governance. You set up, yeah, you set up something to take care of that.
Right.
Uh, and it doesn't work the other way.
And it's easy to get this mixed up. Let me tell you, good city councils get it mixed up. Mark, I see that hand.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. Talk to us.
So I think we have a big rock already. That is the Capel 2040 plan. And then, you know, we can, you could possibly break that down just to, to the four pillars um, that we have. So there are four smaller rocks. And that really is the driving force uh, behind what we do. And then everything else falls into place um, all around that.
Yeah. Yeah, that, you're, you're, you're speaking my language because I think that's exactly right. That, that you, you have those priorities, you've decided on them and they can change. You can come together as a, a council and say, well, now that can't be our priority anymore. It's gotta be something else. And everybody needs a voice in that. But as long as those are your priorities, you, you wanna work them. And I will say, it's, it's, it's common for good city councils to forget that, to have a little bit of a brain freeze. And I, and I'll give you an example from a couple of your neighbors. Um, back to back weeks, a couple of years ago, I was in Frisco one weekend and the next weekend in Little Elm. And um, in, in Frisco, they were, it was a bigger retreat. And they had Parks and Rec reporting on the medians. And this had been kind of an ongoing discussion in Frisco from the council. They wanted the medians to look good. That's a totally legitimate council initiative to say, make the medians look better than planos. You know, that kind of thing. That's fine. But in the course of this retreat, while Parks and Rec people who have horticulture degrees from Texas A&amp;M, while they're there, council members, wonderful men and women, my very good friends, start telling them what kind of plants to put in the median. And, and, and I mean, they weren't just like saying, well, I tried Bermuda. I mean, they're telling them, and so I'm close enough to that council. I could step up and say, you are literally in the weeds now. This is not your job to tell the staff what plants to put in the median. Tell them you want them to look good and then tell them how, you know, get out of the way. The next week, well, they, I'll tell you, you're always in that. That's right. And the next week, Little Elm, almost the same discussion. I thought like, are y'all just changed faces? You're the same council? I know them pretty good too. And they're the same thing. They wanted down the, this planted somewhere. And instead of just telling the staff, this is what we want. That's the direction, right? And letting staff do it, they wanted to get all into the weeds of what it looks like. And so that's those little rocks you're talking about. And if you get all tied up in that, instead of saying, we created the system, make it work and report back to us so we know it's done. You see what I'm saying? And, and, and listen, you may have the most beautiful yard in Capel. Hats off to you, but that's not your job on the council. Does that make sense? And if you take that job, you're gonna lose all the energy it takes to something else. Mayor?
So have you noticed our medians in town?
I know your city is, I, an oasis.
No, no.
I don't know if it's got beautiful medians.
Are they, are they the prettiest medians?
I don't know.
Well, they are zero escaped and they're designed to minimize the use of water and labor.
I'm not surprised at that. You've put together a great system.
Well, that was, that was done a long time ago, but that, they may not be the prettiest, but they're, they're, they're certainly the lowest water usage and lowest maintenance you could come up with. Kevin had a, a note he was passing around over here. So I, I thought I'd share it because it was, it was a pretty good point. He's, he was asking, um, our 2040 is not a plan, it's a vision.
Ah.
And so it is what we work off of. And so it is exactly what this council is working toward. His question, were, were the seven pillars of our 2040 vision?
Seven of four.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I, I was having trouble hearing Mark. So maybe I was, maybe I was saying what, I'm gonna repeat myself, but.
Stop.
But he was saying, are those seven pillars, those rocks? And, and from the, from the council's standpoint, they are.
They probably are.
And there's a lot of other things in there as well, like infrastructure, maintenance, police, fire, but that's kind of operational that, you know, we're, we've delegated that off to the, to Mike and, you know, we just kind of go handle it, handle it. And uh.
And, and they do. They do a great job of it. Yeah. Mark? Oh, you're, you're muted. You're muted.
I misspoke. I, I said four pillars and Kevin's right, it's, it's absolutely seven.
Okay. All right. All right. I know uh, it's, it's, you've been here about an hour. Do you need a quick restroom break before we keep going? Are you okay?
Please.
Okay. Let's take a quick five minute break if you can do it in five minutes. And uh, if you can't, we'll do it in 10. But hurry back in uh, five or 10 minutes and we'll start again.
You look like you're in some rapids on that, on that water there. You're moving around.
I'm just trying to get settled here. Got, I got up and moved around and went to the bathroom and came back. So now, I think I'm settled.
Now you're just showing off. You're relaxing on the water. Oh, see?
There you go. I'm on vacation. I get to relax.
Okay. Yeah. All right, we're waiting for, we're waiting for Mike. Can't start without city manager. Uh, I think he's. I, I detained him. Leadership, that's right. Where's the leadership? Well. Let's, uh, before we kind of jump in the next part, let's just take kind of a, a temperature check, not physical temperature check, but mental temperature check and talk back to me. What have you heard that really resonates with you? What have you heard, if anything, you say, hey, I'm not so sure about that. Um, you know, hey, I didn't invent all this stuff, so you know, it's not gonna, not gonna hurt my feelings. But I just kind of want to hear from, from everybody and like, okay, where, where are we at? All right, jump in there, Kevin.
Shocker, I'm gonna say something. Um, so uh, I love the, the illustration of the pyramid. You know, talking about the relationships and, you know, the operational systems and strategic, all those different levels. I think those are great. Um, and, and I love the, the talk about, you know, I, I own my own company. So, so like, you know, it's solidified, like I'm at the top and it's my job to provide the culture. As you said, culture starts from, you know, goes from the top down. Where leadership, you know, the leaders are built from the ground up. But our, our council is different. You know, we're elected, you know, the leadership, the board of directors, if you will, churns. Uh, you know, there's a natural churn there. So what happens if somebody, you know, there's a, there's a, like a pretty prevalent culture already established. What happens if a new council member comes in and maybe they have a different idea about the culture or a different direction of the culture? Um, I guess, what happens in that sense, you know? Just because it is a different makeup than like a private company or something like that.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and it's, it's not like, um, really a, like a private company where when you're going off the board, you sort of find your own replacement. And that sometimes happens informally. I think ideally, there has to be enough form that it sticks together, but enough fluidity that it can encompass other people. So I, I, I want to use this illustration. I, I have a big family and we're all really close. For four decades, we have been really close. And I have a niece, a great niece actually, who dated this guy in high school. And then they went to different colleges and um, they, they, they broke up. And so, you know, okay, whatever. And then they were maybe gonna get back together. And she was thinking about transferring to his school, his college. It wasn't Baylor and it wasn't any of them. And he said, no, you shouldn't do it. Because all you'll ever be here is Aaron's girlfriend. That's the rudest thing I've ever heard in my life. It just ticked me off and it ticked everybody that I talked to off. You know, like, how could he say that about our Audrey? You know, it's like, I'm not really, yeah. But as it were, she fell in love with him. They're in love. And they decided to get married. And my daughter-in-law, who had heard my rants, asked me, what do you think? And I said, I love him because she loves him. And he's a part of our family. And that's all there is to it. Whatever was before, doesn't matter. And he's a part of our family. And that's all there is to it. Whatever was before doesn't matter now because he's part of that family. And, um, I did the wedding, actually, for him. And, and I'm in it, you know, I love this guy because she loves him. And I think that's how we gotta look at it as you get new council members, right? The city that you love elected new council members, whatever. And I know it's not exactly like a family, but it's got to be a little bit like that. Does that make sense? So you gotta make room for it. One of the best places I saw this ever happen was in Cedar, uh, Hill. And they had a council that was very cohesive and very much the same for a long time, and it was, uh, it was all male. And they got one person, it was a woman, first time a woman been on the council for a long time. And I was doing a council retreats for them and they said, we want to have a retreat and we want to go around and we want to talk, tell her what we've learned since we were, you know, on the council. What it, what we thought it was gonna be like and now what we discovered it was like. And I was like, oh, that's gonna be a disaster. Don't do that, you know, don't. But they did anyway. And it actually worked really good for two reasons. One, they were humble. As they shared their stories, they shared their mistakes more than their successes. And then when they were done, they said to her, tell us what you want to do. And they made, in other words, they made room for her. It really helped. So I don't know if that really answers that question enough, but it's something.
Well, my takeaway is that all the existing council members have to love me and Don. That's what I'm taking away.
There you go. Love them. All right, so you were brave enough to go first. We're gonna just go around the room. Which way do you want to go? To your right or to your left? Okay, we'll skip Mike. Mayor, check in with us. What, where, where are you at temperature-wise with all this?
Listen to that vote over there. I liked your discussion on, on the very first thing on governance and leadership. I was gonna speak up then, but I didn't because everybody was having a good discussion. I viewed that as a discussion on the what and the how.
Yeah, I think that's true.
And, and, you know, our what is, quite honestly, our city charter. Um, it's, it is the rules, it's the guidelines, and as you said, it can't be so rigid that it's, you know, firm and fixed forever. We have the ability to change it. And then the, you know, the, the how is the, how we as a council determined to implement that, that governance, that charter. And that's exactly what the, that, what we're, what we were elected to do. And I thought that was, that resonated very strongly with me.
All right, very good. Brianna?
I actually have taken away the, and I think it's always a good reminder to level set on what our role is in, on council. Um, and I actually appreciate that every time we have a retreat, of just level setting, right? Because I think sometimes, you know, we, we serve for three years and sometimes we can, we can get lost in what exactly our role is. And so we can sometimes get caught up in the weeds when we need to really think, you know, what is our job? What is staff's job? Who's doing what? Or we're not going to be efficient or effective.
Yeah.
And so that was, um, really helpful for me. And I know that I, over the years, have needed that reminder from time to time because, you know, I, I wear different hats sometimes, either as a lawyer or as an engineer and then a council member or a community member or a parent or whatever it may be, right? And so thinking through what I've been elected to do a job, what is my job to do? Um, I think the other thing that I've taken away that I really, really liked was the three questions of what good for what group and at what cost and helping to really, I think framing those questions and just really, um, thinking through that those are the questions that we should ask as council, right? And it helps provide some focus and then let staff go and execute.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. I don't know about you, but to me, the most dangerous person on the highway, freeway, and I'm on freeways a lot, is the one that won't stay in their lane. You know, it's like, pick a lane, any lane, but one lane, please. Because if they're always moving, we never know what to do. And it's a little bit with, with any organization, right? You gotta know your lane and stay in that lane and know how to engage with the people that are in other lanes, in a, in a good way. All right, very good. Bijan, check in with us, man. What's, where are you at with this?
Sure, thank you. Um, I'll go back to the leadership's, um, skills that you mentioned. Uh, not all persons holding leadership positions are leaders. Um, they are authority to do things. You know, some people get there through various ways and elected officials are, you know, trust that you earn from the voters. They place a trust on you, so that's a key, that you have to hold at all times. You have to be honest and you have to be forthcoming, transparent. So as a city, as a selected officials, we have to be transparent with everything we do, which we do in our city. And I think that is so important. So the takeaway is, uh, leadership, how do we execute that as a whole leader here? And like what Brianna just said, um, execute, you know, our role is to be the policymakers, not get into the weeds, which is very true. That's our role, I, you know, that's, that's what we should be doing as well, um, with the proper guidance and, um, and a proper direction, I should say. So that's, that's my takeaway.
All right, very good. John, check in with us.
So for me, the illustration with the rocks, I, I've seen that already. And that, that's probably why it kind of resonate with me because my pastor actually talked about that during sermon. Talks about how, you know, you prioritize number of things that you're gonna have every single day. And it's the question of you're gonna get, try to do as many little things, you're not gonna get to the big thing. And so, and I guess I, I, you know, every day we have hope into things and for me also, and I try to prioritize different things. But I, I get caught up in a lot of small things too, so it's just a reminder.
It's easy to do, isn't it?
Sure.
Yeah, and, and sometimes it's a function of, you care a lot, so you want to do it, you know, and you don't want to seem like a nonchalant. But it is important to step back from it and let others, let others do, for sure. All right, do you want to go across the cliff or do you want to go up there to Colorado? All right, we're going to Colorado. Mark, check in with us.
You know, uh, looking at the, the triangle diagram, um, that base is so crucial. Establishing, establishing, um, relationships, um, with, um, constituents, with, with staff, with, um, other council members, uh, that is just really what helps us get to that top, top of the triangle. And without that, um, you know, we're, you know, we're lost. So we've got to, um, really, I, I think being, being leaders is about inspiring people and getting them to, um, be on board with, um, you know, your, your visions. So you've, um, you, you, you know, you're taking their, their feedback and also synthesizing it into a, a vision and then working with the other council members. Uh, we get to that, uh, top of the pyramid.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's so right, Mark, and, um, the, the value of getting to know each other on the council and, and talking and finding out what, what, what really matters to Don. What matters to Kevin? What matters to Bijan? What matters to John and so forth? Because then you, you know, you can say, oh, I, I get why she does that. I get why she, you know, raises her hand when that comes up. Because we know, if you don't take time to do that, and it's really hard in COVID to lead, I know, I mean, it's been really hard. But now as that's coming up, I would really encourage you, you can't over, I mean, I, obviously, I'm not saying you don't, you, you, you don't want to violate open meeting laws, but you've got to spend time to know each other very well. All right, Cliff, where do you? Check in with us. What, where's your temperature at on this?
Everything's okay.
A man of many words.
Exactly. No, 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 no. Uh, it's, uh, you know, it's basically is spot on. And there's nothing that's been said, uh, that's not been considered or adopted by, uh, this council, uh, since I've been on the council.
Okay.
And so if there were something, you know, something that jumped out at me, I would, I would talk about it. But, uh, we've done that. I mean, we've done that and, and guys much smarter than I am, uh, have helped me to learn that, you know, in my years on the council. And, uh, so, um, so far, so good.
Spexel, all right. Last word on it, Don, then we're gonna jump into the next part.
So I'll sort of echo what Brianna talked about a, a little bit when you mentioned the what good for what group at what cost. It just puts some meat around what I think I'd already been doing in general because I've, I've come to believe you gotta have a clear objective when you do something. Because I can get real philosophical and I've got my own ideology and I've got strong opinions about a bunch of stuff, but then when it really comes down to decision-making, you gotta be somewhat pragmatic and decide, what are these decisions? Who are they impacting? What is it costing? What are we really accomplishing? Is it just for Don's philosophical feel-good? Or is there really some benefit somewhere? So I picked up on your, or that quote, that it just puts some meat around, this is the easy way to think about this when it's time to evaluate what, what we're doing.
Yeah. And, and I want to balance that. I want to go back to something Bijan and I talked about on the phone, which I think is the tension of servant leadership. Because, because Robert Greenleaf said, who coined that phrase, said that, you know, you can't really tell, you don't have one test to tell if somebody's a servant leader. But the best test is to look at the followers and, and ask yourself, are they growing healthier, wiser, freer and more autonomous, more likely to follow in your footsteps? And this is what Bijan and I talked about, you have to ask yourself the question, what is the impact of my leadership on the least of those among us? Are they becoming more engaged or at the very least not more disengaged? And that's, that's the tension right there, right? Because we don't, we, we, we want to do what's best for the whole, but we've also want to consider how is what we're doing impact everybody? And, and that, there's no formula for that, right? There's no formula for that. It takes a lot of wisdom and then it takes a lot of deliberation and then it takes a lot of what I call fortitude to walk it out. Because no matter what you do, somebody's gonna say, no, you shouldn't have done that. And, and you know, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta deliberate about it and then decide and stay together. So let's talk about that. All right, next thing. Why care about this? One, it speeds up the process and reduces the amount of time that you have to spend on taking care of business, once you have a good and agreed-upon process in governance. Number two, it eliminates ambiguity for the council, for the staff and for the stakeholders. Because they can know this is how council's going to handle it, process-wise. We may not know what you're gonna decide, but we're going to be able to know how is the process going to work? And, and that's really what we, we need, is a sense of what, how is the process going to work? And we need to be able to count on it again and again. I think it also allows you to hold yourself to a higher level accountability. That, you know, what, what, you know, mom always said, my mom's 94 years old. She wasn't the only one that said this. It'll resonate with you. The means or the, the ends don't justify the means. That just because you got a great goal in mind doesn't give you the right to change the means or to do it in a way that is unethical. The ends never justify the means. And you'll hear me say this again and again. Honor the integrity of the process, even if you disagree with the outcome of the decision. As great of a city as you have and the challenges that you face is, I know they're great. There is no issue that will come up in your time on the council that justifies violating the integrity of the process. It just isn't. And once you start as an individual violating that process, everybody else will take lessons from you. And then, and when it's to their advantage, they'll do the same thing. And pretty soon, you'll just be spinning around. It related to that, it allows you to take responsibility for your own actions. You're measuring yourself against that governance standard, not against somebody else's behavior. You know, you're not saying, well, Don did this, so I'm gonna do this because I'm justified in doing it. Because did you see what he said? Did you? No, you're not, you're not governed by what Don does. You're governed by those, those, that charter and your things that you've already agreed for. It allows you to disagree without being disagreeable. And that's one of the things I want to be careful to stress. When we're talking about governance, I don't want you to take from that, that I'm saying, just get along, no hard questions. Just, you know, everybody be happy. There, there can be things you disagree on, but you can do it without being disagreeable. This next video doesn't have any sound, but I think you'll realize it doesn't need it. It speaks for itself. Oh, it's running already. Y'all been in, I wonder why you were laughing? Y'all haven't been in a culture like that? An organization like that? Let's go back and look at it again. I guess this just goes on all day. I, I don't know. Well, that's really being disagreeable, isn't it? Mark, you need to catch those fish.
You're right about that.
So, so you don't want a culture like that, you know? You'll be a spectacle. And I, I know that you're not, um, you, you, you probably wouldn't do this and Grapevine wouldn't do this. There are other cities that would do this. They watch your deliberations on camera. It's public knowledge. And if you, you know, in this competitive environment, if you act like a bunch of jerks on the dais, there will be cities that capture film of it and show it to people that are thinking about moving their headquarters to one of these cities in the metro place and say, you don't want to go to Copel. Look at how they act. You can't count on them. I know you wouldn't do that. Mike Land would never let his staff do that. But there are places that do it. I promise you that is true. And it makes a big difference. Few years ago, Bruce Glasscock, great city manager in Plano, got a, a chamber award. It wasn't just a Plano city, but it was the, um, it, it was a chain, regional chamber for CEO of the year because of his leadership in bringing Toyota, uh, to Plano and some other companies. The day that he gave, they, he was given that, um, award, there were a lot of people there at that chamber luncheon. Afterwards, two or three of those CEOs that had moved their company to Plano, not Toyota, but some of the others, came up to him and said, we're really concerned with the environment on your council because it had become so acrimonious. And they said, if we had known that it was gonna be like that, we might not have moved our companies. I know that because that meeting was in the morning and I had a meeting in Bruce, Bruce's office that afternoon and that's all he could talk about, you know, it was so upsetting to him. So I'm just telling you, there's a lot at stake, right? And again, I'm not saying you can't disagree. But if you act dysfunctional, it's not just about you. It's about everybody. You know, does that make sense? And it, people will take advantage of it. They will take advantage of it. And they should, because those companies are putting a lot of stock in this being a stable place to move their families to if they're relocating, right? And they don't want a place that you can't count on decisions. So getting governance right is a really good thing. Does that make sense? All right, let's move on. When you have that, it allows you to, of course, make good decisions without worrying so much about the process. Now, let's talk about challenges. This is research that was originally published by the McKinsey Group. Of course, you know McKinsey and Harvard Business Review, really the highest of the highest when it comes to great research on leadership and governance. And this is a study that they originally did with the hospital industry. So this does not originally come from local government. But I think that you will see the parallels and realize, man, the challenges to teamwork and governance in the private sector are really what we have here too. So, and these are, these are things that the mayor will feel, that you will feel and the city manager will feel. So let's talk about it. One, and then these are not listed in order. They're random. Challenges to governance, the lack of a clear vision and mission. But of course, y'all have a clear mission and vision. You've talked about 2040 and those seven pillars. So you've got it. So thumbs up to that. Now what you need is fidelity to those priorities, right? Because it's easy to get them and then forget about them. That's number one. Last minute agendas. Now, when you first see that, that can be like, well, that's a staff problem. And sometimes it is. But many times I've discovered, and you may not have this problem here, it's more of an issue of council members putting something on the agenda at the last minute. And staff bending over backwards to accommodate them. And really, it's not fair to anybody. It kind of goes back to rules of rules things. Y'all probably have something in place on that, I'm guessing. Y'all have pretty clear processes on how somebody can put something on the agenda?
It's under discussion.
It's under discussion. Okay. So, so, you know, it's important to abide by that and I'll tell you why. Because staff has to get together the right amount of information that is satisfactory to each one of you. And if you're giving it to them at the last minute, their ability to do that goes way down. And then so your anxiety goes what? Way up. And everybody feels bad. And remember, you're all different in the amount of information you require. So some of you are detailed people. You read the fine print to every appliance that you buy, all of that. And you read it in English and Spanish and Portuguese just to make sure it's all right, you know? And others of you, you look at the price and say it's a good price and you don't think about it anymore, right? And that's processed information. So put yourself in Mike's shoes for a minute. For some of you, if he gives you bounds and bounds and bounds of information, you're thinking, what is he hiding? What is he, he's, there is some trick inside of all this. I don't have time to read all of this. He's hiding something from me. And others of you, if he gives you just an executive summary so that you have time to read it, what are you thinking? He's not telling me the whole proof. There's more than that he's telling me. I can't believe he's trying to pull one over us. I'm not going to let that happen. Now, it probably is not that pronounced, but you get what I'm saying? So it's really important, Mayor, to get that good structure of how it's done and then live it out. And you got to hold each other accountable to you. Anybody else want to comment on that? Say anything on it? Number three, board members who put, use the dais to put people down. And they seek power by putting other people down. And there's no place for that. We, we, it doesn't even need an explanation. But if you're seeking power by making the offer to put other people down, all you're doing is empowering others in the community to do the same thing. And so that, that won't work. Next, board members who manipulate the board in how they interact with outside stakeholders. And, and here's how I've seen this happen, different ways. Often it's with developers where a, a council member may make a promise to a developer, speaking out of turn saying, come do this, we'll do that. He didn't have, or she didn't have the right to do that, but she says that, he says that. And then meets with the council and says what? We've got to do it because if we don't, he said he's going to Grapevine or whatever, you know? And we're like, wait a minute, you weren't authorized to go have that conversation. I've seen it go the other way. Where the council will say, we don't, the council member say, just like, we don't want your business here. Well, wait a minute, they're not, you're not authorized to speak. And now the, the council feels like they're, they've been embarrassed. It's really a manipulation thing. By the way, the big area where this happens is where? Social media with, with not developers, but with citizens. You have to be really careful about. And, and, and you know, this is kind of where you got to distinguish between campaign mode and governance mode. Social media is pretty doggone good for campaign mode. I get it. But it's terrible for governance mode. It really is. Because you're hearing from a very small group of people. You're hearing from a group of people usually that have sort of a, you know, their ox has been gored and they've got an ax to grind about something. And you can get really misled on it. And sometimes you can throw the rest of your council into a bad position. So I'm thinking about a city down in the Austin area. There was a young council guy who was really good, really dynamic, had a great heart. And he got elected on the council and he had used a lot of social media to get there. Nothing wrong with that. But then, once he was on the council, he kept using, I think it was Facebook, it was Facebook, to sort of make promises. So somebody would say something about a pothole on 19th Street. And that was his district because they were single member districts. And he would just respond, great, we'll fix it. So he's made this promise and then he tells the city manager, I told him we'd fix it. Well, the problem was what? The city already had a maintenance plan that they were working, number one. Number two, and this was where I got into it because I was a, the council, the rest of the council felt very upset because people in their district started saying, hey, why don't you do that for us? Look what he's getting done, you know? But, but that though wouldn't work, right? Because now we've got just whoever gets on Facebook next gets their pothole fixed next, you know? So, so you couldn't, now, to this, to his defense, he just didn't see that. You know, it was like one of those things, he just didn't know. But once he heard it, he was cool. Oh, sorry, I'm just, and he had a, he had a great heart, is what I'm saying? He had a great heart. He wanted to help people fix things. Once he saw that that wasn't the right way, he just backed off and said, okay, how do we work it? So we all can learn, but social media can get us in a lot of trouble, right? I hear those old man's, I know. We've already talked about board governance, board members who go, focus on management instead of governance. You, you can't, you've got to really discipline yourself with that to not do it. And we've talked about that a lot. I won't spend any time on it now. The next one is staff members who fail to follow through with policy decisions. Now, you know, my, my experience is most staff doesn't do that. I suppose that happens some. But most staff will bend over backwards to do what you as a board say to do. Now, keep in mind, it's not a policy until four hands go into the air, right? Because Mayor doesn't vote. So you can't go to Public Works and say, go patch the, the pothole on 17th Street. You don't have the authority to do that. Now, as a board, you can create a, a policy that says, hey, Mike, we want, we want all repairs done within, you know, three months or whatever it is and enforce it. You can do that. You've got authority to do that. But you can't direct staff. And once you do that, remember, it puts Mike in a terrible position. Because, because Kevin goes in and he says to Mike, Mike, I want to see fruitless mulberry trees planted in every median in Capel. We are going to be the fruitless mulberry capital of the nation. That's it. And you don't do it, I'm going to make sure you pay for it. Listen, you walk out. Here comes Don. Don says, Mike, I don't care what you do as a city manager, but you better make sure that we never put another fruitless mulberry tree in the city limits of Capel or so help me, I'll make you pay, right? So who's right? What's he to do? You can see how much chaos that would be. That's why it doesn't mean anything until four hands go in the air. And you got to just back up and go, hey, is this a management issue or is this a policy issue? Because if it's a policy issue, fight it out and then vote. If it's a management issue, that's Mike's problem. And I don't care how many problems he has. All right, there's some more. This is the same list. Board members who do not understand their basic role and responsibilities. And, and we've talked about that some. What is your role? It's not to run the city. It's to set policy and vision. He runs the city. His staff works the city. You've got to understand it. And here's another one. Board members and staff who don't understand the issues. I think one of the hardest things is to not make a decision before you understand the issue. And I know that you get hit with things, those little pellets that are coming in. And it's hard sometimes to have had time to read everything in your packet, go through it and know what. And Mike, I haven't spoken to you about this, so if I misspeak, what you want, you correct me here. But I think what Mike would say is, it's totally great to ask all the questions you want. Let us know what those questions are in advance so staff can have a legitimate answer. What staff always recoils about is if you play gotcha on the dais. And you ask them questions they weren't anticipating and couldn't have anticipated. And then you embarrass them and you embarrass, you know, others. So if you've got questions about it, send them to Mike. And he will, I'm sure, assign it to the right person and they will get the answer to you. And then if you want to ask it on the dais because that's an important part to you, and sometimes I get that, it is, that's okay, because they know it's coming and they'll have a full answer for it. So Mike, you want to add anything to that or correct that? You know, and, and I, I hear sometimes people fuss about, you know, well, because generally speaking, the rule of thumb is elected officials talk to elected officials, staff talks to staff. And some managers will manage a little different way and Mike will communicate exactly how he wants on that. But, you know, again, you can understand how, you know, how absolute chaotic it can become if you have seven, eight people counting the mayor, all going to staff directly. Because it's the same scenario. Kevin walks in and says this, then he's out of there. Don walks in and says that, he's out of there. Here comes Cliff and so forth and so on. Here comes John. How, how, how can Mike ever lead a staff when that's all happening? So that's why managers say, and that's why it's considered best practices in great city, communication with the staff goes through the manager. And he can nuance that how he wants, but I, I will tell you, I've never seen, a couple of times I've seen managers that were inexperienced say, oh, I don't care, go ahead and talk to him. And it was chaos, chaos. And they had to change it. So don't feel like Mike's picking on you if he's saying, no, you can't go talk directly to staff. It's about organizational control. And you know, certain universities like Baylor got in trouble because they lacked institutional control in their football program. You wouldn't want that happening in your city, right? You wouldn't want that happen. All right. Here's the others. This is probably the most legitimate issue I hear from council about frustration with staff. When they feel like staff does not provide policy options and alternatives. You know, staff sometimes will say, this is what we think we ought to do. Council thinks there's probably another, more to that story, but maybe they don't, are not as forthcoming as they need to be. I always tell staff is, look, own your bias. If you think this is what should be done and don't, tell them. But also tell them the truth about the other, the pros and the cons. I think council has a right to hear that. Fear of moving forward if there is any opposition. This is a big problem for board governance. Because listen, there's opposition to everything, right? It's always, you, you cannot please everybody all the time. So you have to go, goes back to that plan. It goes back to that strategic vision, saying, what are our priorities? And is the decision we're making here in alignment with these priorities? And then, of course, the lack of good processes. So you might take your camera, I'm going to go back to the slide before, take a picture of this one. And then I'm going to ask you to take a picture of the next one. Because I'm going to bind you up in groups and I'm going to let you talk about it. And we're, we'll, Mark will, will get back with you, man. Don't go fishing. But we'll, we'll get back to it. Okay, anybody got a picture of that?
All right, that's good.
Yeah, you can do a screenshot of it, Mark. All right. Here's the next one. So, um, let's see. Who has been on the council the longest? Brianna, okay? And who are my newest people? Okay, so let's put Brianna and Kevin together. And who's the next longest person? Cliff, all right? Let's put Cliff and Don together. And Don, uh, Johnny, let's put you over here with Cliff and, and Don. And Bijan, let's put you with Kevin and Brianna. All right, Mayor, you get the next. You get a pass, that's right. And here's what I want you to do. I want you to talk about which of these 10 things do you think are going to be the biggest challenge for this council? All right, so give me your top three. Out of those 10, what are these, what, what three things you think are going to be the biggest challenge for this council? And Mark, you can make your decision on it and we'll see how you stand with the mayor and all of that, okay? Questions on it? That's why you got those, you can kind of move around, divide up, get together, talk it over.
Hey, Mike, did you come back to the last slide so I can get a screenshot?
The last slide. Do you want to go back to the other one?
Yeah. Thank you.
At 11, come up with your top three. What do you think is going to be the three biggest challenges for this council? What do you think is going to be the three biggest challenges for this council? Yeah. Turn it out. No problem, no problem. There's only one problem, but boy, is it a problem. Oh yeah, the board members who focus on that. Okay, y'all ready? All right, all right. Play rock, scissors, paper, and get it decided. They're having a good row best style. All right, I got to move us on, so we got to, we got to, we got to share out. Let's, let's hear from this group first, because they've been waiting patiently on you. Who's, who's speaking for this group? All right. Cliff's delegating to you. Okay, what, what do y'all think are going to be the top three problems for this council? All right, you had two. What, what was one of them?
One of them was that yellow.
Board members who focus on management instead of governance. Why do you think that's going to be a problem?
No, I didn't say it was going to be a problem. I said it's a potential problem.
It's a potential problem, okay? Okay, and how come? Why, why did y'all make that, why did that make your list?
Well, I'll fall on the grenade.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll fall on the grenade. I could see myself doing that. I mean, my, my circle of expertise, when that comes up in meetings, I will be likely wanting to jump in and give my two cents, probably at some level of detail that Mike or Jennifer or somebody else doesn't like, you know? And so making sure I'm able to pull back out.
Yeah.
Pull back up.
Baker.
Restrain, restrain.
Right.
It's a big leadership trade, for sure. Okay, very good. John, you want to add on on that? Can you say, say something on that?
I think we might all have a tendency to do that, to have a, I guess, a, some sort of a background and certain part we consider expertise in, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's true. Mike knows my boss, Ron Hallfield, the CEO of SGR. But he was a city manager for 20 years. And part of that time, he was ACM, Assistant City Manager in Plano. And he tells this story about a council member who was a really good council member, but his business was in lubrication oil. So that's, that's what he, he was a salesman for, for lubricants. And Ron said, it didn't matter what the agenda item was. This council member would always take it back to what, some question about lubricants. And it was so crazy that, you know how staff has a council preparation meeting before council meeting to kind of go over the agenda? After they would do that, then Ron would take the department heads who he reported to him, and they would spend another hour every two weeks talking about the agenda. What could be traced back to lubricants on this agenda? Can you imagine that? Now, listen, I don't know that guy, but I would bet my bottom dollar that if he knew that's what his behavior was driving staff to, he would have been appalled. He would, that wasn't what he wanted. But for one thing, think of the money that was being wasted in that meeting. Think about if you take six department heads and an ACM, their annual salaries add up to what? A lot. And you're spending two hours with him every week, or every other week, just talking about lubricants. But he had driven them to it, see what I'm saying? He was an expert here. So it's really hard to lift yourself up with that. Not everything is connected to your area of expertise. And when it is, remember, this is the hard part. It's still not your job. So Brianna, I'm sure is a great attorney. But you're not the city attorney. And when you do that, and I'm not saying that you, no, no, but I'm just using that. You're out of your lane, and the rest of us don't know what to do. Because now you've become a danger to us, and just trying to get down the road. And you've got to constantly remember that. It's not my job, it's not my job. It's Mike's problem. Mike's got a lot of problems. All right, let's go to this group. Oh, I thought, oh, I didn't know you had a second one. I thought you said you just had one. All right, what's your next one? It's on the other page?
Yeah, it's on this page, yeah. Fear of moving forward if there's any opposition.
Okay, yeah. Now, why do you think that is a potential problem for this council? Why do you think that could be a possible problem?
Well, because, I mean, you're not, you're not going to get input that you, that you normally would and should get because of fear of, you know, butting heads with someone.
Yeah.
So you got to talk it out. I mean, you, you know, you got to plow through that and, and, and set the predicate and say, hey, you know, I'm a little, I'm a little tense about this, but I think we ought to move ahead and, and talk about it and work through it.
Yeah. I think that's, that's a good point, Cliff, that you can show empathy and, and be empathetic with somebody, but still not give them their way. Right? I mean.
Absolutely.
You can't raise your kids that way, right? You give your kids everything they want, they'll wish you hadn't. But, but I think there's a fear of that, you know? We want to be empathetic with that person that comes up and, and their arse got bored, and we can be empathetic. That doesn't mean we don't go forward.
That's correct.
And that's, hey, leadership is not for the faint of heart. And, and if you need their approval in order to be the leader, you can't be the leaders. You just can't. You know, I have three grown kids, and I used to tell them, and I'd still tell them this too, I don't care if you're a leader or not. I don't care, I love you to say it. I don't care if you're everyone, anything. But if you are a leader, you better have the courage to lead. Because nothing is worse than following a leader who lacks courage. Nothing is worse. So if you don't have the courage to lead, this is about what I was telling you. Just have the, have the integrity to step aside and let somebody who does have the courage lead. And that's what I want to say to a lot of council too, right? Mark? Did you go fishing again? Talk to us.
When you talk about the courage to lead, I, I don't want people to confuse that with being bullheaded about things. Because I don't claim to know everything about everything. And there may be some times when constituents will bring up things that I've never even considered. And then you're able to make the decision and be the leader. But, you know, don't put your blinders on.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great point. And, and it also should be echoed, you know, we owe every person respect and dignity and honor. I'd never want to come across and say, you should be disrespectful. There's never a time to be disrespectful to somebody. Never. But that does not mean you owe them the agenda. There's a difference between being respectful and giving them the agenda. Don't give the agenda to negative minded people. Don't give the agenda to dysfunctional people. Don't reward dysfunctional behavior. You can still be respectful to people, and should be, without rewarding bad behavior. That's really important. All right, so that's two good ones. Mark, let's jump to you. I'm giving you enough time to decide.
Jump to me, all right.
What, what do you got, man? What, 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 what do you, two do you think?
You know, I was with Cliff's group on the, the board members who focus on management issues. And then the other one that I had was last minute agendas. And I, I don't see that we do a lot of that. But I, I would be concerned that that might happen in the future. But I also want to add that I have, I really think we owe our constituents more than a weekend to respond to items on the agenda. You know, we, it's typically a Friday deadline, and it comes up on Tuesday. And I know that that's the way the charter is set up, but, you know, I, I think we should be. you know, I, I think we should be sending out the agenda on Wednesday. I know that changes deadlines for everybody, and that's something I've, you know, harped on in the past. But, um, with all the issues that we had in zoning, um, several years ago, things just, you know, popped up, and it didn't give people a chance to, uh, get together and, uh, respond and, uh, then, you know, make their feelings known at the council meetings.
All right.
That's all I have to say.
Yeah. Great discussion. Sounds like the mayor said y'all are having some, some discussion on that, so. And, and I think there, again, I mean, you know, I don't know your, your charter exactly, but that is a policy decision. That you can set policies saying, when things have gotta be turned in, so, then you gotta live by it. All right? The three amigos, what do you got for us?
For the, the time eaters over here, uh, as the duly-elected representative of this awesome group. Uh, here we go, uh, a couple of things. Um, so this one was one I put on and, and they, um, you know, kind of agree with me, but, um, board members who seek power through put-down. Uh, and for me, the reason why I felt very strongly about this is it really goes back to that, that triangle that you put up, and having that, that honest communication with people, that, that base of that triangle. And I think that that, um, that, that communication extends to the council members as well as the staff as well. Making sure that, um, that we are giving our staff every opportunity, uh, to answer those questions, as you alluded to earlier, like, you know, giving, um, you know, giving them an opportunity to get the questions ahead of time, uh, to make sure that they don't feel like they're, uh, you know, put on trial or anything like that. Just to make sure that we, as a council, have that trust and that integrity with our staff and our other council members. I think that that is paramount for what we need to do.
Well said, yeah, definitely. I, I, I think, you know, to tie that into culture, and establishing the culture we're talking about. Let's use this illustration. Let, let's just say that Kevin and Bijju, they, they're on this item, they're in agreement. We all know it. It's, it's Kevin's issue, but Bijju is 100% for it.
Thanks, brother.
Yep, and, and let's, let's say, let's say Don and Mark, they're on the opposite. So they don't want it. And we got public coming up and talking about it, which is, of course, they're right. If the person starts attacking Kevin as they're talking, it's nothing for Bijju to complain about. Means nothing. Nice that you did it, but we all know that you're on his side anyway. So of course you're gonna take up for him when people start making it personal. What needs to happen is for Don or Mark to say, "Mr. Mayor, everybody knows I'm in opposition to what Kevin and Bijju want. But I am going to move that this debate be tabled, and we're gonna, I'm gonna vote for it if my colleague is continuing to be addressed that way, because I will not tolerate it." That sends a message to your followers, your constituency, that, yeah, you can disagree, you can't be obnoxious and, um, attack people. And you don't have to do that many times for it to change the environment, you know what I'm saying? But you also don't have to let it go many times until it gets out of control. And I don't know that that's happening here in Capel. I'm not, don't, don't take, I mean, I know nothing. But, it happens, yes.
So we actually are pretty strict about the content of messaging in our public hearings and forums.
Mm-hmm.
And it's actually the mayor's responsibility to govern that. Um, so my, I would be the first level of moderation, um, because that, that's, that falls in my purview, and that's something that the mayor does do. Uh, but, you know, a, a reinforcement, if it continued, would be absolutely great to, to have. We've never had that happen.
Yeah.
But it would be great, you know, to have that uniformity or that, you know, uni, uh, unity.
Yeah.
That would make that happen.
That, that's exactly right, Mayor, and, you know, if you, if you take, if you've ever studied any of Patrick Lencioni's, um, writings, and he, he talks about this in the book, Five Dysfunctions of a Team. And, and what he says is exactly what you just said. That in a great team, the leader does have to enforce accountability, but they don't do it alone. And then in great teams, they police themselves, so that the leader doesn't have to be the one who's always saying it. It doesn't mean that you don't have a responsibility to. It's like you said. But it's, it's even better if your group polices itself. And let me just say, let me apply it to one other thing, because you were talking about management. It can be internal, right? And I've seen this happen with council, where councils start saying, "Well, well, really, Cliff, that's a management problem." That, don't y'all think? You know, and then the council go, "Yeah, that's right. You, you're kinda getting it." They don't say it, but you're kinda getting into the weeds. And then I, you know, and he says, "Well, you're right." It's, it's a wonderful thing, because it doesn't mean we think Cliff's a bad guy. Doesn't mean we don't want him to be on the council. Just on this part, we're going, "Well, that, that's kind of a management thing." And I've seen councils do that, and I, I've seen them go, "But, that's right." And it wasn't just one person. And over time, you, you sort of teach each other to stay at the 30,000-foot level, without it being the mayor's job always to do, or Mike's job to do. Mike doesn't wanna be saying that. That just causes conflict, right? You gotta speak up yourself. And in my book, in some ways, that is leadership. It's that leadership. He's like, "Oh, wait a minute, that's that." All right, so that's one. What's your next?
All right, our next one was, uh, board members who do not, do not understand their roles or responsibility.
Okay, talk about that. Why do you think that might be a problem?
Um, so, uh, you know, uh, Brian, do you wanna speak on that? Because that was yours.
Absolutely, and I, and I think Bijju and I kinda spoke to these, right? It's, it's a matter of, we've got a lot of new council members.
Yeah.
And so I think it's, um, just, I think it's more of a potential challenge and yet one that I think we can level set on in, in situations like, or in places like retreat, where we talk about, you know, where we go from campaign to council member, and making sure that we make that shift.
Yeah.
Uh, and then just understanding what our role is in governance and how we move forward as leaders in our positions, I think are really important. And then I think also the fact of, you know, what is in our control? What is in, what is staff to do? Whose, whose roles and responsibilities are there?
Yeah.
I think that's really important. And then thinking through, also, we talked about earlier, like, even with me wearing a different hat, and you said, you know, like, my job is not to be the city attorney. We have a city attorney, and, and I struggled with that in the very beginning, where I, I, you know, wanted to put my lawyer hat all the time, and that's not my role. That's not to say that I can't provide input, but, um, anyway, I think that's a challenge.
Yeah, that's good. And, and, you know, I appreciate your, your transparency there. Just self-awareness, that we can have that tendency helps us a lot, right? For sure, for sure. All right, well, let's, let's move on, because I'm, oh, you have one more? All that debate? All right, what do you got?
All right, the last one was, um, we put on here, uh, staff failure to provide policy options and alternatives.
Okay.
And,
I'll elaborate on that.
Uh, so it was actually something that Brianna said, that I, I think kind of resonated with us, is she said, "In councils past, uh, when staff would make recommendations, there would, there would be more options to choose from," uh, versus, and, please,
So I'll elaborate, so.
Yeah, please elaborate.
So,
Please, please don't leave me hanging.
No, 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 so, well, because that wasn't one that I, that I chose, but we, we are all in this together. Um, but both Bijju, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bijju and Kevin were saying that, and that, and at least one item, or maybe a couple, they had noticed that they felt like there was not options and alternatives provided by staff, and that they only had one option, right? And so, for example, um, we talked about one item that we've talked about for a long time. I'll just say Magnolia Park, right? And one of the things I said is, like, I, I've been on council long enough that I've seen, you know, different staff and different, you know, um, um, processes and procedures of how we do things, but I have seen that staff comes with options and alternatives, that there might be situations sometimes, and I don't think it's all the time, because I think they were all saying it's maybe been one or tw- or one or two times. We just wanna make sure it doesn't become a problem going forward, where maybe staff has come forward and said, "This is the best option", but yet not provided the other options, and making sure that, you know, especially for new council members, even if the issue has been discussed before, that, and the options have been presented before, just realizing that there are new people at the table and bringing those forward.
Yeah.
And so, does that capture what you guys were?
One other thing I will say is that, we, we do understand that for particularly Magnolia Park, there was the north option and the south option. But I would love to know, like, maybe go down even like a, a level lower of detail about like, you know, there was, okay, here's the north option, south option, here's the cost, here's the cost. And that's really all the info that, that we got on why the city, you know, the staff recommended that particular, you know, a particular alignment. So maybe like one level lower about like, you know, were there, uh, you know, like, grade considerations, or like, you know, are there any other factors that are, you know, suggesting like, one, one alignment versus the other alignment? A little bit more detail in those options would also, I think, help us, I think, make better informed decisions as council members. And to be clear, I was not on council when this was presented, but it's something just in my observations.
Yeah.
I haven't been in the middle of that, but it's just something that I saw, so.
True.
Also, I've talked, yeah.
I, I think, I think it's a matter of, you know, you, it, it, every team, remember, goes through those stages of team development. Of learning, you know, forming, storming, norming, performing, goes through all that. Staff, too. Okay, I gotta move us on. All right, let me move us on. Go back to your seats, or sit wherever you want, and we're gonna talk about, um, a couple of challenges. I don't wanna spend too much time on this, but it's been mentioned a little bit. What one big thing is overcoming the, the, across the cavemen and articulate incompetence. You've probably heard these terms. Cavemen stands for citizens against virtually everything. You ever known somebody like that? Uh, you probably don't have a bunch of them in Capel, but you might have one or two. Uh, but there, and there's that group, that they're just against everything. And then the articulate incompetent is that person that really doesn't know what they're talking about, but that never kept them from talking about it. Right? And those people drive you crazy. So, you gotta deal with it. And a couple of things to remember. One, there will always be people, more people who destroy than who build up. Because it's easier to destroy than to build up. And, um, Mark and I were talking, my son, one of my sons is an architect. And, uh, the reason he's an architect is because we remodeled a house when he was about 13. And we built on the two sides, and, and I can't do anything with my hands. Nothing. And my son was forced to learn how to do stuff at that age. And so he learned, and he kept learning, and eventually became an architect. But even though I can't do anything, I want you to know something. Don, I flat-out tore up that house. I tore it to the studs, and I yanked some of the studs out. Even I can tear up a house, but Lord knows I can't build a house. And I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of people in your city that can tear it up, but they could not build it to save their life. So you gotta be careful about that fact, right? Here's another one. I love this, um, these, these two statements. Fear of criticism often assures failure. If you're afraid that somebody's gonna criticize you, it's almost an assurance you're gonna be a failure. And then I love this quote by John Burke, who, um, Edmund Burke, who, um, is a statesman from years gone by. This is, we, every council member ought to be required to memorize this. Every city ought to have it printed at the dais in every council member's place. A representative owes the people not only his industry, he means work, but his judgment. And he betrays them if he sacrifices it for their opinion. You owe the people work, your work, but they also elected you to make good decisions, to make good judgment based on the information that you have. And you're gonna always have more information than they have. Even in a governance that is and should be transparent, it can't all be shared with them. We can't all do it. That's why we elected you to be on the council. And we, you owe us good common sense. And if you sacrifice that common sense so that we'll think more of you, you actually betray us. That's why one of my favorite council members, um, is a guy that, um, ran on council in Plano, and he kinda got in there, like, you know, we all run. Everybody runs on a campaign for change, right? I mean, nobody runs to say, "I wanna keep things the same." The person that runs and their platform is, keeps on the same, keep everything the same, is the runner-up. I mean, they're not elected. They're the runner-up. I mean, all of you ran with it. That's okay. Nobody should resent that. And, but he ran, Ron ran on this campaign, not just for change, but based on information that there was corruption, there is too much excessive spending, there is all of these things going wrong, and this group got behind him, and they're gonna change it. And Ron was their candidate. Gets on the council in Plano, and he discovers it's not what he thought. There wasn't giant corruption. There wasn't overspending. There wasn't all of this conspiracy. And Ron Kelly is one of my heroes, because he had the courage, there's a word, to go back to his constituency and say, "It's not like what y'all thought. It's not like what you thought." And they rewarded him with that, by being so angry, they voted him out of office the next election. You know what? He's not done. It'll be okay. But, you know, at least he had the courage to match his convictions, right? Uh, because, you know, he gave good common sense as he saw. And, um, to me, that's more noble and heroic than promoting something, standing by something you know isn't true. And, and just because you want people to vote you. Mark Hill, yes, sir? I see that.
Mike, I do wanna state my disagreement with you on, we have the most information. Um, we do not. Staff is not infallible. And, um, you know, there's been situations where, uh, information has been brought to light that I think has, uh, you know, really changed the minds of, uh, some council members on, uh, certain, um, certain items, and, um, I really appreciate the input that we got from, um, from the citizens, um. And I, I guess, what the key thing here in this, um, this quote is, "If he sacrifices it for their opinion." Now, if it's their opinion, that's one thing, but if it is for their true information, you know, if they've, if they're really bringing forth information that we are, we do not have, um, I don't think we should turn a blind eye to it.
No, that, that's well said, and exactly right, and I, I would say in general, you're gonna have more information, but yeah, that, that's, that's certainly true. And then I think what Burke was saying, it's not, it's clear. He means if he sacrifices it for their opinion of himself. So not their opinion on the issue, but he just, he just did it because he wanted them to like him. That's what he was saying.
Gotcha.
Yeah, good, good, good catch.
Thank you.
All right, I wanna move us on, uh, because I wanna talk about, um, we've talked about some I wanna move us on, uh, because I wanna talk about, um, we talked about some negative, let's talk about what it looks like. So Mayor, you already mentioned this earlier, but effective board governance requires both a philosophy and policy. And, and then a philosophy means knowing what you want to accomplish and why. And the policy means knowing how to accomplish. How do you set things up so that staff can execute? So you need both. And that kind of leads us to talk about, I'm gonna pass all the different things here, um, and talk about, um, roles and responsibilities. Cause we, all that other stuff, we've kind of covered and, and followed. So five areas of responsibility for the board. These are five general areas, and then we're gonna talk about seven roles. Number one, formulating the city's mission, vision, and goals. Where are you going? Y'all are doing that, that's your 2040 plan. Second, ensuring the financial health of the organization. Now, you know, I wanna, I wanna say without getting too into detail, there's a difference between setting up systems for financial health, which you're responsible for, there's a difference between that and trying to manage every single expenditure, which is not your responsibility. That's you set up a system, you've got a staff, you make sure that system, uh, is audited properly, but you are not the auditors. And you are not the executors on that. You'll get way into the mud and you won't be able to execute. Number three, setting expectations for efficient and effective management and systems. So when we say the staff is Mike's job, we don't mean by that, that he gets a pass on whether the staff's doing their job. In your evaluation of him, that's one of the things you're gonna evaluate, is, is the staff functioning? Is it effective? Is, are they doing what they should be doing? And if they're not, you hold him accountable for it and say, do that better. So that is your responsibility, but it's not, that's different, right? Than going and sitting down in the Parks and Rec office and saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shadow you, make sure you're doing your job. And it's like, what? You, that's not, that's not your job. But you set up systems, which of course, a lot of that is, and I'm presuming you do, having an effective means to evaluate the manager. That's fair, gets everybody's voice in, and is not a black session, but it's something you can build on for the future. Don't have that, obviously, yes, you are, whatever, talk to you about how. You want quality of services. I don't do it, but anyway, we do. Quality of services. And, and that goes back to that question, what good, for what group, and what cost? Goes back to, are we willing to drive, you know, um, 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 Chevette, Chevy Chevette, you know? My son drives a nineteen ninety-six Nissan. It must mean he's a bad architect, Mark, I don't know. I, he's driving that thing into the, into the dirt, cause he does cheat. But, no, he's also got a nice car. But you want to have quality of services. That's your responsibility to say, we want this at this level. Five, monitoring board and its organizational effectiveness in advancing the mission, making the vision a reality. There was Churchill that said, no matter how beautiful the strategy, you should sometimes take a look at the results. I love that, right? And, and, and so, you know, there needs to be time when you're talking as a, as a board, are we making progress towards these seven pillars? And if we're not, why not? What have been the game changers and do we need to recalibrate? But you're responsible not just for governance, but for leadership, and leadership's about moving things forward. Does that make sense? Let me stop and see what your thoughts are on those five areas. Does this resonate as, as accurate? And is there anything up there, or is there anything that's missing from being up there? We think about five big areas that you need to be working. We're gonna talk about roles in a minute, but these are the areas you're responsible Good? So sometimes we do fist, fist to five. Fist is no, I totally disagree. Five is I'm right on board with that. So let's, let's just ask, fist to five, where are you on there? Fists to five, five there, five, easy, quit five. Everyone's high five, but this is five. You wanna comment on it, anything, you wanna say anything about it?
Sure.
Okay.
The quality of service is one of the big talk here. The quality of life in Capel, the quality of service that we provide to our citizens. It's key for, um, I'm sure all the elected officials, people talk about that quality of life here. Quality of life doesn't mean, in my opinion, that we need to spend top dollars on everything. Sometimes we may have to go negotiate on a better deal.
Okay.
And to get the best service. You can get best service by negotiating down on certain things, which we all do in our personal life. So, you know, you know, things we buy, and things we purchase, and so on and so forth. So quality of service is what stands out to me because it's, that we talk about here in Capel a lot. Thank you.
So, so that's a great, anyway, it's a great comment. It, it's, it sort of goes back to that defining what costs, right? And that's, that's a budget debate, and like, okay, not, not, you know, like, okay, we're gonna spend four hundred dollars or five hundred dollars, but what's after our work? You know, are we, we want top of the line? That's the, that's the BMW. No, we want a Lexus, and we're not, we're not gonna go less than that. Or are we low? What, one example I give from this is, um, Little Elm. When Little Elm was looking a few years ago at building their, um, sort of, um, community life center, indoor, outdoor parole, and rec center and everything, um, that, the, the, um, council had set aside a certain amount of money for it, you know, what it was supposed to do. And then the bids came in higher, and there was a little blip in the economy. And we were doing a council retreat for it, and they, during that time, they reported on it. And so the, the discussion was, we're not gonna decide this today, but we're gonna have a workshop on it. They had a workshop on it. Later I asked them, what'd you have to sign? They said, we found the money. We found the money because that priority is so high to us as a community and amenities. We're, it, it was, it was that out. We weren't willing to sacrifice. But that was the debate on the council. I don't know if it was seven oh, or six one, or five two, but the majority said, nope, that's what we want to do. Does that make sense? And, and I, but I think that's a great point. You have to have that discussion, and it's great to have that robust dialogue about it. And then, of course, you rally behind the majority and move on. Yes.
Just kind of to tie things up on this one a little bit. Each, uh, winter at our winter retreat, which was in January this past year, we actually do have a, a ranking or a rating that is essentially this list.
Okay, yeah.
That we actually internally rate how we've done. And then from that, if you guys remember the list of prioritizations that we painfully go through, we developed the next year's strategy based on what we did the past year, how we did, and then where we want to go. So.
You're, that's a great system.
This is, this is part of that process.
Yeah. Good, very good. Wish more people did that. All right, let's talk, oh, by the way, Mark, anything you want to say on that? He's good, okay. Now let's talk about roles. Seven roles. Number one, an external communicator. You are an external communicator from the organization to the community. And several points in this. Number one, you have to establish a real link to the whole community. Listen, I love council members. I've spent a lot of time with you. But council members are notorious for a little bit of exaggeration because it is it. One person comes to you and says, hey, Cliff, I'm concerned about this. Our tendency is to go to the manager and say, there's, there's a lot of people talking to me about this. And if two people come talk to you, it's your tendency to go talk to Mike and say, everybody's upset about this. Yeah, you and your brother-in-law, that's all. And if three or four people come talk to you about it, what is it? My God, it's a mandate, you know? Like, okay, five people talk to you out of fifty thousand, put it forty thousand. Put it into perspective, right? Not saying you're disrespectful for them, or you don't listen, because they may have the most, the best idea ever, but remember, you've been through a lot of debate to rank those priorities. So there better be really good evidence that that supersedes it, right? Before you say, wait, we can't do this. So I was in Amarillo the other day, got a new council member, uh, I'm from the Amarillo area, so I pay a lot of attention to this. They've gotten to buy, they've got to build a new city hall. So the hall's falling down. Amarillo is busting out the seams. Everybody wants to move to Amarillo. Well, anyway, people are moving to Amarillo. And, um, and, and they can stay in the building, and it's gonna cost, I don't know, that was the highest option. They can renovate another building, and that was the second highest option, or they can build a new building, and that's the best, that's the lowest thing they could do. That, I mean, that'll be the cheapest thing to do. And they got a council member that voted against it because we need to study it more. Like, okay, I love you to death, but that don't make no sense, right? Like, come on. Don't, don't hold things up just because a couple of people got in your ear. Desta, establish a link to the whole community. The key is not to listen less, the key is to listen more and to hear from everybody. You know, there's surveys in different places. So that's the second. You gotta be that person that reassures people that think the city is moving too fast, or too slow, or too far, or not far enough. You've got to be the ones that say, we had a lot of discussion about it, we heard from staff, we're good. I hear you, be respectful, but give them assurance. Number three, act as ambassadors on behalf of, of the city to everyone. Um, you know, I'm, I, I've thought a lot of college sports. Never liked when these coaches go to a new team and they talk about my players and the old, the old regime's players. And, and I like, I like what was, was said by, by some people. Look, the minute you become the coach, they're all your players. And I think that's true about Capel. They're all, all of, and you may have a district or, or whatever, but they're all your people. So be that person that is the ambassador to all of them. Set an example by your own personal demeanor regarding how decisions are made with positive and appropriate behaviors. And, and here's, here's what I'm gonna say, and then move on. All of us carry with us all the time two buckets. And one is a bucket of water, and then one is a bucket of gasoline. And you carry them with you everywhere you go, to the grocery store, to the job, council meeting, everywhere. And wise leadership knows when to use which bucket. And when you come on a group of people and they're all upset about these terrible conspiracies that are going on in city hall, and how they're not listening to you, and they're doing this, that is not the time to use your bucket of gasoline and pour fuel on that fire and just make it worse. Like, yeah, you don't know the half of it, let me tell you this, blah, 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 blah. That may make you popular with a small group of people, but that's not good leadership. That's the time you use your bucket of water, and you say, I was in that meeting. And let me tell you what was really sad. Here's how we discussed it. Here's why we decided, right? And when you come up against the people that are all fired up about the city, and they're excited about what's going on, and whatever the big issue is, they're pumping, that is not the time to use your bucket of water and say, yeah, but if you knew the rest of the story, let me tell you what, it's gonna really, oh, good leadership. That's when you use your bucket of gasoline, and you say, yeah, it's gonna be great, and when that happens, it's gonna cause this, and then it's gonna happen this, and you, you pump it out. I'm not saying you lie, I'm saying you frame it in a positive way. And listen, in great cities, and Capel's a great one, but you gotta keep being great. That's what leaders do. They know when to use which bucket, and you've always got a bucket in your hand. And, and it's really tough, what you're doing, based on the limits of the world. All right. We've talked about this already. Protect the integrity of a process more than the integrity of your position. So, you know, you may have lost the vote, but vote, move on. Second, your internal communicators. So in that sense, you provide some direction of concerns of the community and stakeholders. I don't want to say you don't have a ear to the community, you do. Just make sure you're hearing, uh, you know, as wide of a group as you can, and you honestly represent it. Don't exaggerate. And bring that direction back to people. Listen to what people are saying, both with their words and their deeds. You know, probably the truth is, people like the city a lot, and they're indicating, even though at times, like we all do, we might complain a little bit. And, and I think it's important to act as a compass to the staff. Now again, that's not saying you direct staff, but, you know, um, you're in, you're in the community. And staff needs to hear through your manager, or through times where you're all together, here's what, here's what I hear, here's what I sense. That's give and take of leadership and dialogue. Uh, you could stay in your lane and signal to other people what's going on, and that's an important role. Three, you are fiduciary overseers. Note the word overseers, not executives. So monitor the trends, not just the current cash flow. Where are things going? What's the direction? Obviously, you have to ensure compliance with regulatory, uh, codes and rules. Ensure that resources are properly accounted for and reported. And again, how do you do that? You set up a system and make sure that that system has a closed loop so that there's reporting on it. Four, ensure that expenditures are for the purposes intended. And again, this is a matter of systems, not you pouring overreach and expenditure. Ensure that resources are properly invested, managed, and it kind of, this, this goes into all of it, but you, you talked earlier about transparency. What you want to do is ensure that systems are in place which build trust in the community and among stakeholders. So that you can say, yes, it is looked after, yes, here are the requirements, and yes, we meet them. And, um, you know, you can, you have lots of policy debate about how much you want to spend, what the budget is. I get that. But you set up systems that ensure it's happening, and then you close the loop on those systems. Questions on that one? Four, we've talked a lot about this, you're a policy developer. So you want to make sure that appropriate policies are put into place that govern all aspects of your municipality. And that you internalize that mission and vision, that you have to be, as we kind of say, all in with what you're trying to accomplish, and that, that it's your 2040 mission. with what you're trying to accomplish, and that it's your 2040 vision. At the appropriate time, challenge assumptions, including your own. And you know, one, one of the things Ron says in our company, and it's a little bit different, but you relate to this. Ron is adamant that as long as this is our policy and procedure, that we will follow it faithfully. While at the same time, stepping back occasionally to evaluate, is it still the right process? Now, we can't do that every day, or we can't get anything done. You can't do that as a council every day or every month. You gotta have periodic times to say, let's step back and look. Is this policy still the right policy? It's appropriate to do. You may come to the conclusion, yes, it is, but you ought to look at it. And including, you know, your own assumptions, challenges. This is important. Don't be afraid to ask questions, but be willing to accept answers, even if they aren't what you expected or wanted. And I, I won't name the city, but I watched it unfold in front of our eyes. Two, then three people got on the council, and they were really tied up about how much money was being spent on some things. That was kind of their campaign. So as the year starts unfolding, they ask questions of staff about certain decisions and expenditures and why, and research, please research. You know, was there another way? Is there other alternatives? Which they did. And they came back and reported to council. And council members said, well, we really don't think that's right. Please go back and do it some more. And so what happened over a cycle is this. The very council members that got elected with the platform of reduced costs, guess what they were doing? They were driving costs up because staff was having, hourly staff was having to put in overtime to answer all the questions that they had already answered. And when they got the answer, council didn't believe them. So I don't know where you go, right? You can, you have every right to ask questions. But you know, at some point, you either got to trust that the men and women that work on your staff have integrity and competence, or you've got a whole mic responsible to get a better staff. But you know, I don't know what the other options are. You just end up just in a, in a, in a futile cycle of just never trust. And, and let me tell you, staff will bend over backwards to please you. But they cannot be, they cannot lie for it, right? They can't do that. So that's a really important. Number five, ensure the pursuit of the mission, not just the preservation of the status quo. Move us on. Information, systems oversight. Uh, some of y'all are in IT, so you understand this. Understand the significance of good data. Understand how to use good data. And make your decisions evidence-based. Do the facts support what we're saying. And remember, the more information you have, the more power it has. Priority assessments. This is what you were talking about there. Deciding what are the things that we're going to do. So do things right and do the right things. And remember that you cannot do the wrong thing well enough to make it the right thing to do. So that's, that's not acceptable. Lastly, we talked about this, your role as a strategic visionary. Identify what your purpose is. Particulate your core values. Decide what you want, Capella to come to the future. Define what you want to achieve. All right. We're out of time, but I want to take just a minute to sort of let you share takeaways, 60-second takeaways, besides, Mike has a lot of problems. You can't say that. So, uh, anything else you can share? And, uh, we'll ask for a volunteer. Who wants to start first? Takeaways for the night. That's a good idea. Mark? Hey, wake up, brother. You're dreaming about trout again, I can tell it. I'm so jealous. What's your takeaway from tonight? The mayor volunteered you.
The mayor volunteered me. Thank you, Wes, I appreciate that. You know, I think the biggest takeaway is, um, allowing staff to do their job. Um, we set the policies and they execute. And, you know, if we're clear about the direction that we've given them, you know, but just takes four hands to make that decision, then we've given them their marching orders, and they can move forward with it.
Not as simple as that. Good job. All right, you get to say besides the mayor, because he's got to go last. Who do you want to go next?
Um, Cliff, because he always goes last. I want to hear him go next.
All right, thank you. Cliff, what's your takeaway from the evening? Teamwork.
My takeaway, that's exactly right. My takeaway is that, uh, man, we need to pat ourselves on the back. Uh, because, I mean, there's not a lot there. Uh, I mean, around the edges, absolutely, you know? We can do some, we can do some spiffing up around the edges. But we're straight in the middle as far as, as a city, as far as what the basics are that we need to do. And so we're, you know, it's this, this will require, uh, you know, like I say, a li- a little bit of trimming, but for the most part, you know, we're there.
Yeah.
And that's probably one of the reasons that we, and the incredible thing is the staff. Uh, in this city, the staff is just, uh, uh, over the top as far as the quality. And I'm talking about every single department within the city. And so that really makes our job much easier. Because so much of this stuff, uh, they do through Mike, uh, without us ever having to ask for it. So we just show up and there the information is.
Yeah, I, man, you know, as an outside observer, I would echo that and say, yep, I think that's exactly right. It's why Capella has got the reputation it is. It's why it's such an outstanding city. It's both council and staff. Because council has to do their part so that staff can do theirs. And historically, y'all have done that. And you're to be commended. No doubt about it.
No, no doubt.
All right.
Yeah.
Don, takeaways?
So being the new member, um, I guess I just appreciate the fact that you put some form around some things that I think are pretty common sense when you see them and when somebody tells them to you. But unless they're laid out in a certain format, uh, or even, you know, listing that the seven roles and whatever the five,
Five areas.
Five areas before that. And even listing out the pitfalls, like here are potential pitfalls of places where councils get in trouble. So just sort of putting that format together was helpful.
Good.
Um, and like I said, like a lot of things in life, a lot of it is common sense when you take a step back and look, or have someone explain it to you sort of externally like that, so.
Yeah, it's good, very good. Thank you. All right, Kevin?
Um, I definitely got to echo what Don said about the five areas of, uh, responsibility and the seven roles. Like, that is, that, that's a big takeaway from all this. Like, that's, that's really the meat and potatoes of this for me, uh, in particular. Um, I really like the, the caveman thing. I think that that's, uh, very, very interesting. Uh, I, I'll be very honest, in, uh, in my line of work, I don't have a lot of opposition as to what I do. You know, like, just from my customers and clientele and stuff like that. So, uh, being in this type of forum is new to me where I might have to face that opposition. And even to a point where like, like unreasonable opposition. Like, no matter what I do, I'm, you know, I'm not going to make everyone happy. So just kind of that reinforcement of that, hey, that's a normal part of this, I think is a very important takeaway for me. And, um, I think the last thing would be, uh, I, I guess kind of understanding that balance of, uh, uh, to Mike's credit, amazing patience on him. But like, you know, you said the whole, you know, when, when five people tell you something, it's a mandate, you know? That like, that whole thing is like, just understanding that balance of, you know, are those five people that are talking to you, is, is that really the pulse of the city? And, and finding that pulse, but like, where is that line of like, what you're hearing? Is that, is that real stuff, or is that just chatter in a small group? So, a, a lot of amazing takeaways that will take several weeks to digest, I think. But there's amazing foundations to be a good council member, so thank you.
All right, you bet. Mayor, we'll skip you, we'll come back to you, give you last word. So, Brianna?
Um, I mean, I thought it was more, potentially with, I thought it was a week in, a week out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to Mike, um, tonight or tomorrow.
Like, I think a lot of really different, a lot of things like my sense, but yet it needed to be like, and even just, you know, with, I think, so, and one of the goals, we can talk about, at the,
Yeah.
Maybe only the one here, and having a doctor with, describing the cost, right? Because you've, you've got staff going around and around and around, kind of, you know? We'll get to it, we give the, give you the same answer, and you're going to accept it. And so, things like that, that I think are just good reminders, and, um, might help for us in some way. I don't know, the mayor, the mayor's out in some way, but just a reminder, time to time, it's to remind all of us of what is our role, what are our,
Yeah.
Just to, like I said, like, just like in any situation, you know?
Yeah. And, and you know, when you do it regularly, you don't have to misspend as much time maybe as we did tonight. You know, because y'all got a lot of new council members. But when you do it regularly, you, you just kind of hit those high points and go, yeah, we've got it. Kind of, kind of like Cliff said, I mean, it's not like y'all aren't doing a great job. But, um, one of my colleagues says, you don't have to be sick to get better. It's like we can always improve, so. All right, Bijou, what's your takeaway?
Sure, thank you. You started your talk today by saying all the baseball players, you know, do their, um, 30-day workout in Arizona or Florida, right?
Yeah, yeah.
To understand the basics.
Right.
To go through it, so that it will be a second nature to them, right? So this was a refresher for me.
Good.
So thanks for reminding me all the things that we supposed to be doing as a council member, policymakers, policy developer, I saw the word. Uh, so those are important for me, and I think, um, uh, thanks for reminding that. And one more thing from your strategic visioning loop, um, you showed a couple of points in there. One of them stand out with just citizens' input to council, to the, to the all of us. I think it's important we are here to the community and, um, hearing from many people. But not to what the things you mentioned. One person say, hey, a lot of people sent to me, they said, two people said that, oh, yeah. Five people, it's a mandate, no. And so it's, it's, uh, listening to many, uh, people.
Yeah.
And if they express the concerns. One other thing is, many people will not approach you if you're not approachable.
That's true.
So some people's personality won't allow constituents to come to you and talk to you freely and openly and with confidence, because they don't know if you're going to put them down.
Yeah.
And so on and so forth. So we need to be mindful of that. Uh, there are a lot of people in this city was born in different countries. Politics works differently. Democratic process works differently, I talked to you about that.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's totally different. So those kind of things are important to understand, uh, the demographic that we have in the city, and the experience people had with the democratic process as a duly-elected people in different countries, in different ways, and different experiences. So the takeaway, bottom line is, inputs from residents is important. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's right, Bijou. And I think it's, you know, it's kind of like what I was talking about with the new family member, and we relate to new council member, but it's also a wider range that we, we need to make everyone feel like they have a seat at the table. They may not be sitting at this table, but we're aware of it. That's, that's the role of inclusive servant leadership. No doubt. All right, John?
Actually, for me, I just need everyone to hear what they said, and this actually, it covers everything.
It's mandatory, isn't it?
No, it's actually good, because they said everything that I need to say, right? But, um, no, um, I think that, you know, you didn't realize that when you, you talked about two people say something, that was Cliff's whole family, so that is everybody, right? No, but, uh, no, this is good. I've learned a lot. And, uh, I think that one of the things that does stick out about is, you know, you, you have, we are here to represent the citizens that have, have actually have elected us, but at the same time, we're actually leaving the running, uh, the management with, uh, Mike as well. So I guess I have to kind of, we all have to kind of remind ourselves that that, that, that's part of the process. Uh, but otherwise, you know, it's a good learning process.
Good. Yeah, and you know what? Nobody bats a thousand. Nobody's perfect yet, right?
So Cliff.
Yeah, we're good, but you don't have to be perfect. You don't have to be perfect to be a good council member. Hey, guys, I've enjoyed it. It's been great to be with you. I really love your city and, uh, care a lot about it. Think the world of Mike, I've mentioned that before. And so really appreciate from my end, just the chance to be with you. So that said, Mayor, I'm going to throw it to you and let you share your takeaways and join us any way you want to.
All right, thanks, Mike. Thank you very much. It's been a very, very, well, first of all, it's always good, like Bijou said, to go through the refresher. Uh, you know, you've reminded us of a lot of things that we've forgotten or didn't know. So thank you very much. I got a lot to say, uh, probably not enough time to say it, so I may save this for some of it for tomorrow. I did appreciate your comments that we're not in an election mode anymore. You know, that, that is, we've all, well, not everyone here this year has been in election mode, but the majority of us have been. And it's really hard to get out of that mode. And, you know, we make promises when you're out there campaigning and you feel obligated to keep those. And yet, we know that we've got 40,000 residents that we're actually representing, and not all 40,000 are going to be happy with us. But the hard part is that's okay. You know, we can't make 100% of the residents 100% happy all the time. It's just not going to happen. And that's part of the maturity, I think, that comes on, you know, having sessions like this where we talk about it. So, you know, keep that, you know, just keep that in the back of your mind. The other thing I really enjoyed hearing was that we collectively are going to learn things that we don't know, and there's going to be things that surprise us, that it may be contrary to our gut instinct. And that's okay too, but we have to learn to accept it and move on. So, you know, that, those are, those are very, very, uh, high up on my list. And kind of, uh, we've got several things that are going to be coming up. You know, he, Mike was talking about how, uh, we need to be fluid enough that we can change policy and procedures. We've got several things that we're going to be looking at, and I'm going to be asking you guys for feedback. We've got a social media, uh, policy or that we're going to be passing out. Uh, Mike's going to email that out sometime this weekend.
Okay.
Thank you. And, and it, it's, it's, it's going to apply not just to the council, but to our boards and commissions and staff. It's for, it's for the city. It's not just for us. So we can, we can have some discussion on it. Um, I'd like feedback and comments on it. Um, it's, it's been reviewed preliminarily. There's a lot of good content in it, and it, it, uh, addresses some of the, a lot of the items that Mike was talking about. The one thing that we're going to be doing, uh, um, Cliff and I had had a real brief discussion as members of the CRDC committee. We're going to ask the, the, the staff to bring CRDC items to the CRDC before they come to the council. This is just a procedural change. Right now, council votes on a, an item that is, comes before us, and then it goes to the CRDC and the commit, the CRDC is feeling a little bit left out of the loop, that they don't have any, uh, overview or say-so in it. It's, it's already a done deal. So that's just to keep that committee a little bit more functional. We're also going to be passing out the existing rules on how a, an agenda item gets on council agenda. It's, it's actually in the charter. I think we need, it's probably time to have a discussion on that. I'm not sure it needs to change. But we need to have a discussion at some point in the future, so you guys need to see what the rules are on that. I, I'll save the rest of it for tomorrow. The one thing I would like to end with the, the discussion on today's session is, if you think about, The one thing I would like to end with the, the discussion on today's session is if you think about what the city has done in terms of our triple A bond rating, the awards that our parks and recs get, the awards that our libraries get, the awards that our police department gets, the ISO uh, one rating that the fire department gets. You know, sometimes we feel that we're, we're chasing our tail, that we're, the tail's wagging the dog. But in, in reality, the city has done phenomenal things. And we're in a position to take that forward and do even greater things. And that is that pyramid that Mike showed right at the beginning. And we need to focus on doing great things for the future because we're in the absolutely best position to be able to do that for the citizens of Capel. So, you know, I appreciate all of his comments and they fit. I hadn't heard his presentation before, so this was new to me, but it fit within what I think our, our charter and our goals as a council are and should be and will be. So, um, I'll kind of leave you with that, those comments. There was one thing that we forgot to do, so we're going to change the order of our agenda tonight. Um, we had a citizen's appearance scheduled at the beginning and I failed to call that. So we're going to change the order of, of our agenda and ask for, uh, citizen's appearance now. If there are any citizens here willing to speak, uh, please come forward. Ms. Ashley, do we have anybody sign up? We did not. All right. Well, we are, we are then at the end of this meeting. We will meet tomorrow morning. Um, for breakfast will be served around eight AM with the meeting beginning at eight 30. Uh, we will be talking about interpersonal communications, which is a follow-on to this. Marcel Brunel, who you've done the assessments with, and please bring your color printouts of your assessments with you. Um, and we'll have a, a, a very informative meeting tomorrow. Is there any other business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, we are in adjournment until tomorrow morning at eight 30. Thank you.